And good morning. I am happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the July 10th, 2018 School Board Meeting to order. Whether you're in attendance here today or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased that you took the time to join us. We do appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. Board of Brevard Public Schools staff remain fully committed to doing our very best to ensure excellence in all aspects of Brevard Public Schools, but we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thanks to each and every one of you for being active participants in this process. Pam, roll call please.
Thank you. Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Present.
Mrs. Deskovic?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mr. Ziegler?
Present.
Please join us for a moment of silence as we mourn the loss of two members of our BPS family. Robert Sousa, a Technology Associate from McNair Magnet Middle School, and Colin Fritz, a Rising Senior at Titusville High School. Thank you. This morning, Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Reed?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you watching, you probably see a new face up here. No, Dr. Mullins has not assumed the reins yet, but he is sitting in today, and so that is why Dr. Mullins is Acting Superintendent today as Dr. Blackburn is out of town. So at this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize any students, staff, or members of the community. Start down with you, Mr. Ziegler.
Sure. Today, I would like to recognize a special guest in the audience, Melbourne City Councilwoman Debbie Thomas. Thank you for joining us.
Ms. Belford?
Just two quick recognitions for me. I had the opportunity to join the Adult Education Graduation Ceremony, and if you have not had the opportunity to make one of those, they are really phenomenal ceremonies. They do a great job. This year, they utilized the Merritt Island High School Auditorium and had a big group of graduating students, all of them with the rich stories and challenges they have overcome to get to that point. They all graduate with a credit for a class at Eastern Florida State College, and as they are walking across the stage, Jeff always asks, "What is next for you?" And nearly every single one of them has a next step plan. Many of them going into the military, many of them going on to college, and so just really a nice ceremony. Appreciate the opportunity to be there and certainly encourage my fellow board members to take the opportunity as they come throughout the year. And then my second recognition, as many of you I think are aware, we all received an email from Sue Han talking about some of the fencing projects and some of the public input that has been taking place on the fencing projects at our various schools. I just wanted to give some recognition to her and her proactive communication with us. Received a call yesterday, panicked call from one of our residents about some of the work that was taking place there. Was able to get in touch with our project manager thanks to Sue's email out to us. He had already been on top of it and was going to go out there this morning and meet with that resident to make sure that we could resolve this concern. So many thanks to Sue and Dane and that entire crew as they go through this process and working with our residents to make sure that they are part of the process.
Thank you, Ms. Deskovic. Mr. Susan?
Okay. I first want to say thank you for Ms. Envol, for putting together all these policy changes. The way you have it inside there is amazing. I don't, you know, they're pretty boring for everybody else, but that takes a lot of work. So I wanted to say thank you to that. I also wanted to say thank you to Mr. Arnott, who has a youth build grant that he's trying to put in on top of the graduation ceremony that you had. That man is doing a phenomenal job with our post-secondary instruction, and I actually was a teacher under him.
I like you.
I don't think he likes my speech too much. But Mr. Arnott, I was under him as a former teacher. He is amazing, and I'm just really happy to see what he's doing in general. I also want to say hi to my daughter. She said, "Do not recognize me in this thing." Honey, can you stand up for a second? She came to the meeting today, and I just wanted to say thank you for coming, Isabella. Thank you. I also wanted to tell you guys that Viera High School will be playing football against Majori Stoneman, and many of you know that the individuals in the situation that occurred there last year, they actually have a seven-on-seven tournament, if anybody wants to come visit, next Tuesday from 2:00 to 4:00 on the fields behind the school. Many of you guys know that not only do coaches have the regular coaching season, but then they also coach through the summer and spring and everything else. I wanted to say congratulations to Coach Powers before everybody gets up and leaves. As a former teacher under Coach Powers, he was an amazing man who's now going to become the Assistant Principal at Melbourne. He is phenomenal. He had the, he commanded the control of the kids inside the classrooms, but he also led with a lot of the other teachers, and I think Melbourne's going to be blessed to have you, Mr. Powers. And then I also wanted to say thank you to our Veteran Speaking Project that we have going on. He's going to give a speech in a minute, and that was something that we worked on to create years ago to try to get involved inside of the schools, and you guys have no idea the impact that that occurred. It was just him and I sitting down trying to figure that thing out years ago and going around, so thank you. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Dr. Mullins, do you have anything? Mr. Susan, I'll just add that what Mr. Weaver does in this community for both our veterans and to honor our active-duty troops is greatly appreciated, so thank you very much, Don, for everything you do in our community. It truly makes an impact.
Did you sign up for that Veteran Speaking Project yet?
Yes, I did.
He did? Is it confirmed? There we go. Let's make that happen.
That brings us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Mr. Craig and members of the board, on today's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, two presentations, 32 consent items, 13 action items, and four information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations has been revised. Items F12 through F18 on board policies were moved from action to consent as they are technical changes only. Item F23 on continued school board's pharmacy benefit management contract with Cigna was moved from under employee benefits to financial services. Action item G51 on approval of superintendent's employment agreement, and information item G59 on discretionary project for youth mental health awareness are additions.
And what are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Susan's range discussion. Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, would you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Craig, we have 16 persons on the agenda item for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Susan. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. And the motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins?
At this time, I'd like to welcome and recognize several leaders to the administrative ranks here with us this morning. First, please join me in congratulating Ms. Lauren Ferranti on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Guidance Services Professional at Hoover Middle School to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Bayside High School.
Good morning. I just wanted to say thank you to some different people in here who have watched me and helped me get to this point, and I'm very excited for this opportunity coming up next year.
Next, we recognize Timothy Powers on his reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher at Viera High to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Melbourne High School.
Good morning. I just want to thank a lot of people in here. First of all, the board, Dr. Mullins, Dr. Blackburn, for the opportunity to serve our wonderful district. I'd like to thank all of our directors for steering our organization down the path of excellence. I'd also like to thank Mr. Jeremy Solomon, Mr. Tom Sawyer, and Mr. Mike Alba for all their mentorship throughout my 11-year teaching career. Also, I'd like to thank my family here, my parents, nieces and nephews, my sister, last but not least, my wife, and my three children, Jackson, Matthew, and McKenna. Going through my master program and being the head football coach at O'Gally, they had to sacrifice a lot, so I appreciate them. Go Bulldogs.
Congratulations to Angela Owens on her reclassification and transfer from the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Fair Glenn Elementary to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Merritt Island High School.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mullins, Dr. Blackburn, and school board members. It is definitely an honor to work for Brevard County Public Schools. To my husband, who is my backbone and my support system, he's made a lot of sacrifices so that I could have this opportunity, so thank you. To my family that caters my little boys, my little boy, my big boy now, when I'm not home, thank you so much. You guys continue to support and do everything that my family needs, and I'm so grateful for that. There are so many leaders that I've had the opportunity to work for that have just been outstanding, and if I do not mention them, I would leave here feeling really bad. So Ms. Tomlinson, Ms. Teji, Dr. Mella, Ms. Brockwell, Ms. Murphy, Ms. Moore, and of course, Dr. Dunkel, thank you for guiding me, leading me, and encouraging me to become who I am becoming. And to Dr. Dunkel, who is in the mountains. It has been an incredible two years working with him. He has taught me to lead with the teachers and support the teachers as well as, you know, doing what's best for our students. To the faculty at Fair Glenn, it's been an incredible two years, and I'm going to miss you immensely. But now it's time to the Merritt Island Mustang and Mr. Rager. I am so excited about this opportunity. Thank you, and I look forward to working with the faculty, staff, and community of Merritt Island High.
We also want to congratulate Mr. Andy Papczynski. How did I do? Not too bad? On his reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher at O'Gally High to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Rockledge High School.
Thank you. Thank you, board members, for having us here today. Dr. Mullins, Dr. Blackburn. I want to take a couple minutes to thank my great mentors at O'Gallie High School, Jeremy Solomon, John Rush, Glenn Webb with his time there before he went, before he moved on to a higher position, and I want to thank my family here, my two daughters, Adeline and Piper, and my girlfriend Amy, you know, the sacrifices that they made going through grad school, coaching two sports at O'Gally, a lot of time away from home, but ready to go over and join the rock.
We want to welcome and congratulate Ms. Jessica Thomas on her reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher at Westshore Junior/Senior High to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Satellite High School.
Thank you. Thank you to the board, and thank you, Dr. Mullins and Dr. Blackburn, for this opportunity. I am really looking forward to joining Satellite High School and serving the Satellite community. Huge thank you to Rick Fleming, who's been my mentor for the last seven or eight years at Westshore, and it's been an invaluable experience, and I look forward to it. Thank you.
Congratulations to Ms. Heather Smith on her reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher at Bayside High School to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Viera High.
Thank you, board. Thank you, Dr. Mullins, Dr. Blackburn. I would like to thank my husband and my family for always supporting me and loving me and dealing with all my craziness. I would like to thank Chris Moore for all of her mentorship and for inspiring me to become a leader. I would like to thank Principal Weibel and all the administrative staff at Bayside High School for their continued support and for the experiences they've given me. And last but certainly not least, I would like to thank Mr. Albert for welcoming me to Viera High. Thank you.
And we recognize Ms. Lisa Higgin on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Guidance Services Professional at Madison Middle to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Central Middle School.
I'm really excited. It is high. And thank you.
I'm sorry.
I missed it. Thank you to the board and to Mr. Sherer for hiring me. I'm super excited to work at Central and to be a part of that family, and I will miss my people. I will not cry. And I have had the best mentor, Sherry Tomlinson, and amazing, amazing, amazing group of leaders and examples to follow, and I hope that I don't disappoint. And my husband's pretty great, too. Thank you.
And we continue with our congratulations to Christina Donahue on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Guidance Services Professional at Jackson Middle to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Jackson Middle.
Good morning. Thank you to the board and Dr. Mullins and Dr. Blackburn. I really appreciate everything you do for all of our schools across Brevard County. In addition, behind every great leader in our district, we definitely have our mentors, Sherry Tomlinson, you know, Susan, Stephanie Archer, and many, many others that are here in this realm across the district that have guided me in a way for me to learn my strengths and to develop me as a leader across our district. But I certainly wouldn't be able to do this without my family and their support. They've made massive sacrifices. I have all my children here, all six grandchildren I think were in attendance, my wonderful father, and I think my husband is reading eagerly. He never traveled to DC, but he would be here when I come. I think my children are a little bit excited. They're not going to be decorating classrooms anymore, but little did they know, they got a whole school now. Sorry, kids. Thank you.
And we wish to congratulate Ms. Jennifer Williams on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Guidance Services Professional at Stone Magnet Middle to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at McNair Magnet Middle.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins and the board and cabinet members for this opportunity. I would like to thank my current principal, Ms. Misty Plan, and the Stone family for all the learning opportunities that they gave me. And unfortunately, my husband and son were unable to be here today, but obviously, I want to thank them and my family for their support. And last but not least, I want to thank Mrs. Delauter for this opportunity, and I'm very excited to join the McNair family.
Congratulations to Ms. Amy Delago on her reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher at Hans Christian Anderson Elementary School to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Fair Glenn Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins and school board members. I want to thank Pam and Murphy, Principal Fair Glenn Elementary, for providing me this opportunity. I also want to thank my former administrators, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Jones, for your continuous support. Ms. Jones, I wouldn't be here today without your mentorship over the last two years. Thank you very much. I also want to thank my family for their continuous support. I have to concur. My children are very excited about not setting up any more classrooms, but they have a whole school now. Thank you. I'm very excited to join the Fair Glenn team.
Congratulations to Ms. Catherine Weerly on her reclassification and transfer from the position of teacher at Manatee Elementary School to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Tropical Elementary.
Good morning. Before I get started on my brief thank you, I just want to apologize for my voice. It's a case of impeccable timing to lose your voice the night before speaking at a board meeting. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Mullins and the board for this opportunity to become an Assistant Principal with Brevard Public Schools. It's truly an honor. I would like to thank the Department of Elementary Leading and Learning, Ms. Jane Klein, for this opportunity, as well as the directors. I'd like to thank previous administrators, Chris Moore, for encouraging me to pursue a career in leadership, and then Carl Brown for molding me into a leader. I'd like to thank my administration at Manatee, Shannon Daly, and Christina Carver, and my entire Manatee family. A couple of them are here today who have just supported me and encouraged me along this path. And to the Tropical family, Ms. Sorokin, I am so thrilled and honored to be a part of this team. I cannot wait to get to work. And last but not least, my wonderful husband and beautiful daughter that are here, and my family that couldn't be here today. I'm just so thankful, and I'm honored to become a leader within Brevard Public Schools. Thank you.
Congratulations to Jamie Slence on her reclassification from instructional coach at Autobahn Elementary to 10-month Assistant Principal at Autobahn.
Good morning. I want to thank the board, directors, for this opportunity. I have to publicly recognize my two mentors who are both here today, Mrs. LA Lee and Mrs. Kristen Sorokin, who really recognized my potential as a leader before I did. They pushed me and encouraged me, and I would not be standing here today if it were not for these two amazing individuals. My family, sorry, I'm a cryer. I'm a cryer. My four children who are here today, to your mommy and mom, I love you. My parents, who combined have 68 years, long since retired, but 68 years serving with our county schools. I'm sorry, I was correct, 74. I stand nowhere without you. And to my husband, who is my rock, my constant encourager, and reminds me daily to follow my faith first. So thank you, and I will make you proud.
Congratulations to Ms. Rebecca Teji on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Assistant Principal at Madison Middle to the 12-month Assistant Principal at South Area Adult Learning Center.
Good morning. Thank you to the board and the superintendents, as well as Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Thedy, Dr. Fontan, and Jeanette Ransom for giving me this opportunity. I appreciate that they have faith in me, and I'm not going to let them down. I want to thank Sherry Tomlinson for always being a mentor to me, and there are many other people, but I just want to thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to serving the South Area. Thank you.
And last but certainly not least, congratulations to Casey Turner on her reclassification and transfer from the position of Title I teacher at Oak Park Elementary School to the position of 10-month Assistant Principal at Oak Park Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins, Dr. Blackburn, and members of the board, as well as DJ Crenell, Jane Klein, for your confidence in me for this administrative position. This is such an honor, and I'm beyond excited to begin this next chapter. I've been blessed throughout my career with so many amazing role models and mentors from Cambridge to Oak Park. I thank you to Jennifer Brockwell, Jennifer Clark, Kim Harris, for your continuous support, guidance, and mentorship. To Susan Mulcrone, I look forward to continuing to work with you to be your new AP. And of course, to my fiance, my parents, and my son. I couldn't do any of this without them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all of, and congratulations to all of our new administrators. Good luck on the next leg of your career. I don't want you to have to stick around, but we do have a great presentation, and it's only going to be about five minutes, I think, from Mr. Weaver. So if you'd like to stay for that, before we get into financials, we'd appreciate it. Otherwise, we can, we can take a quick break, but I think I'd like to have Mr. Weaver speak. Dr. Mullins, can you introduce our first presentation, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Craig. Our first presentation is about the Vets Back-to-Class Project. Here with us today is Army Veteran Mr. Don Weaver of Cocoa Beach, who works with the Cape Canaveral Chapter of the Military Officers Association of America and the Brevard Veterans Memorial Center. He is also the county coordinator for the Vets Back-to-Class Project. He will offer an update and discuss promising new plans for the upcoming He will offer an update and discuss promising new plans for the upcoming school year. Mr. Weaver, welcome and thank you.
Thank you very much. First of all, I have to say I can't be a crier. Sometimes I wish I could. John, you are fully engaged, and I expect more hours out of you this coming year. Three years ago, we began a process that said, "We have a great school system here." I went to school in Melbourne as a space-age kid when my dad worked at Cape Canaveral. My wife, and she told me not to tell you this, but I have to since she's not here, do not report this, was in the first graduating class at Cocoa Beach High School. So we have come home to retire after the Army and 44 years in the Department of State as a career diplomat. I learned things that helped me in my life here, and this is a way to pay back, not just engage the county, but help you as teachers to engage the students, because in our country today, less than one-half of 1% of our military is in uniform. So we have a kind of an opportunity as veterans to remind people without these veterans, where would we be? And let the veterans help the teachers, especially when we talk Freedom Week and all the other things that talk about the Constitution, that talk about service and everything to go forward. You all have handouts, and I hate to review some of that since you have it in writing, but for the benefit of others, we began this program as a concept, and I quickly realized we needed to engage somebody else to help us. That's the Joe Foss Institute, a national organization based in Arizona, founded by a multimillionaire Medal of Honor recipient from World War II. When he died, a large part of his estate went to the Joe Foss Institute to help around the country. We are the largest single program in the United States of veterans working together in one school area to provide that kind of training. Joe Foss gives us pocket constitutions, waving flags, educational material as needed, so it's a really neat partnership. Since we began, we are 412 students short of 10,000 that we have instructed in three years. Last year, we actually went backwards. No military guy wants to go in reverse. So that reason for the hurricane and not engaging our teachers and everybody because of that till later in the fall, we really want to change that this year. And Matt Susan has come up with a great idea. I've been working with some students at Vera High School to help produce it, an online and little booklet that will have bios of our 17 volunteers that are in our program, including John, Matt, and myself, and sort of an outline of how to engage the program, and then an online version so that teachers can take a look at that when they need extra resources, need to break it up, get horse, and need a rest. We got these veterans who are anxious to come in and work with your lesson plan to deliver what you need to do throughout the year. We are really busy in Veterans, when Veterans Day comes along, we'd like to make it more true throughout the year. We also have begun a pilot program at Vera High School beginning the second year with eight volunteers now in a ninth-grade mentorship program where we are engaging with tons of Canalee, Ms. Canalee, I think she's Vice Principal there, in a wonderful program that helps students who would like, who volunteer, and whose parents volunteer, to have somebody else to look, to talk to as they try to realize better their potential as students. So we're excited about that one as well. I close by simply saying it's my honor to have a chance to talk to you for the third straight year. If you don't invite me back for the fourth, I'll be disappointed, and we will figure out a way to get that done anyway. No, I know you will. And I am just glad, I grew up in Brevard County, and I'm glad I'm home.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Susan?
I just wanted to say thank you. When I was a teacher, one of the reasons that we started it was when I was a teacher for American history, we were trying to reach out with different eras inside of our military affairs, and we, it was difficult for me to pick up the phone and try to call and find a veteran specific to that era. So when this thing came out, and I will tell you, Mr. Weaver is just amazing at creating the program and driving it to the point now where every social studies teacher can call, set up an appointment, they come and they talk specific to the era that they were in or specific to the Bill of Rights and what our Constitution means to defend it. I did want to say, I'm not a military veteran, so my involvement in this is just a support and move through. When he was talking about the 17 veterans and everything else, it's just my involvement for that pamphlet, and I just wanted to clarify that. But thank you, Mr. Weaver, that's amazing. Number one in the nation now. I remember climbing over like San Antonio, Houston, remember all of them? We were beating them. We're there, so thanks.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Susan. Before we get into our budget update, I will, I do appreciate everybody indulging in letting us hear from Mr. Weaver. If you need to move on to your rest of your day and your business day, please feel free to take this time to do so. If you'd like to stay as Ms. Zuckert gets set up for her budget presentation, please feel free to do so as well.
Hey, John, thanks for putting him like that, man. Giving him the opportunity to, that was beautiful. He is a force.
So they're having five kids write stories of all of these guys.
Look, they're all dressed up.
So then they go in and they talk. They already know a little bit about them. It's just phenomenal.
Susan?
There we go.
Sorry, did I start something I shouldn't have?
All right, thank you very much. We are going to continue with our board meeting if we can keep the chatter down a bit.
I hate to think him as the son of an Army veteran.
Thank you. Dr. Mullins, can you please introduce our next presentation?
Next, Ms. Penny Zurker, Chief Financial Officer, will now provide us with a budget update. Ms. Zurker?
Thank you. Good morning, Board. I think this is our fifth time to review the budget for this year. Starting with our budget timeline, we have been through the legislative session, our workshops in April, and we did a workshop in June. Here we're for a budget update in preparation for the tentative hearing coming July 26. In our general fund, the information is pretty much the same as you've been seeing for the last couple of times, and that's a result of the legislation finishing up in March. We saw a very slight increase in BSA, slight decrease in cost differential. The millage was rolled back again, so we did not see any increase for the required local effort. However, our discretionary millage did go up a little over $2 million. And categorical and special allocations went up five, mainly driven by additional funds for SROs and mental health. Gives us a total additional funding through the Florida Education Finance Program, commonly known as the FEFP, of $7.8 million. Our recurring budgetary savings and additions that we've had so far, revised staffing plan 3.7, supplies 140. We still have in the budget the additional transfer of LCI for maintenance expense and salaries. We have readjusted our LAP salaries for retirees. We're currently projecting that to be 1.3 million. That number will be finalized by the first public hearing later this month. That puts our total recurring savings and additions at $10.3 million. Our mandated or required usage, of course, committed categoricals have to come out of that, and in those new committed categoricals, we have $4,023,000. Again, that's mainly the SRO funding and mental health. Our FRS contribution goes up every year. This year, it was $1.1 million increase. Our charter schools are seeing growth over and above what the district is receiving, so we have an increase of $4.2 million of revenue to go to the charter schools. Regional choice busing cost consideration is $1 million. Opening of South Lake Elementary is at $1,004,000. School resource officers has been revised to 962,000, and this is due to Title IV funding, which allows for a school security safety piece, so we've been able to cover a portion of that with Title IV. Our school safety security specialists are at $1,044,700, and then with the Endeavor Contracted Operator for $473,000. So mandated required usage right off the top totals $14,641,000. It's important that I stop here and point out, in our last presentation on June 12th, in here at this point, we had a salary enhancement package of $8.4 million. That put us at about a $5.3 million deficit. Were required to balance the budget before the first hearing, so that has been removed to allow us to balance the budget. The change of FEFP funding of 7.8 plus the recurrence of 10.3, less our mandated, that does leave us with a current positive balance or available funds of $3.5 million. Our next steps with the general fund, we are looking at budget reductions. The 10 divisions under Dr. Blackburn have been doing their proposed reductions, including what positions we would have, they would have to cut if we asked for up to a 10% cut on that. We are also looking at any funding salary increase or budget priorities funding the board may want to do. I will point out, we would be required to come up with additional funding for any of that. We are waiting on the second calculation of the Florida Education Finance Program. That will come out around the 17th of July, within a couple of days of the property appraisers and the cross-state certifying property values for the new year. We do expect some changes. We hope they're minor, but this is where they come in and look at the property value, see how it reflected to what they projected, and then they could raise or lower our revenue. Last year, we took a paration at second calc of about $1 million, so we're hoping for positive things. Then the last thing, of course, we're in the midst of closing our books for 17-18. I've got a fly flying in my face, I apologize. And we expect to be done around the first week of August, and at that time, probably closer to the tentative hearing, we'll have a good idea of what our fund balance, our remaining fund balance will be, and any lapse funds that we have out of that that can be added. Capital projects, this will be our first time starting to look at capital projects, and it is a broad look. We're looking at total revenues of $119 million. Remind the board that the PICO funding is for maintenance and repairs. We do not get any new construction money. Capital outlay and debt services, other state funding that we receive. The local capital improvement or LCI ad valorem tax, SLSR tax, impact fees. Other revenues include investments, interest on our investments, and then transfers in is from food service. They fund their own capital projects, and they're anticipating about $1,005,000 there. Our expenditures, by DoE, Florida Department of Education ruling, we can only spend within the capital funds in, for facilities acquisition and construction. However, there are funds in LCI we are allowed to use for other purposes. Those funds that we're going to use for other purposes are transferred to the general fund, where we're allowed to use those functions, such as FFNE for our schools, maintenance repairs, property insurance, other capital expenditures that would be charged to a function other than facilities and acquisition. So because of that ruling from DOE, almost $50 million of our money will be transferred out to the general fund for a variety of allowable uses. Our total expenditures are anticipated to be almost $153 million. It's important to point out, many of these expenditures are carryover from 17-18, the current year. The projects are crossing years. Our debt service, it should have said in the capital projects, in addition to what goes to the general fund of that 50, almost 50 million, 36 million of that is transferred into debt service to pay for our debt service, which is our certificates of participation bonds. Also within that, we have some state Board of Education bonds that are small. We received the money from the state to make the payments on that. Again, investment income and our transfers in. Our scheduled debt service payments are just over $37 million for 18-19, and we will have fees to pay on the debt service of $60,000. Special revenues budget, these are all our federal grants. They may be federal direct or federal through state, as well as our food service program. We're anticipating federal sources of $74 million, almost $400,000 from state sources, which would be federal through state, and local sources is coming mainly through our food service program. The expenditures for the grants run through instructional pupil personnel services, instructional curriculum development, and other functions, and then our food service program is $35 million. And you'll see the equivalent transfer out from food service that you saw into capital. For our budget, our next step, as I had mentioned earlier, is receiving the certification of property values on July 15th. We anticipate receipt of the second calc on July 17th. Depending on how those days fall, and I do believe we're hitting around a weekend there, sometimes it takes a day or two. It could be as late as the 19th. We will be pushing it to get the TRIM done, which the advertisement will be in the paper on July 22nd. The TRIM advertisement requires us to say whether we are doing an increase in taxes. I will say we are, however, it's not because we are raising our millage, it is because property values have gone up. It can be a misnomer in making people think that the school board is raising taxes, but it is a result of everyone's property values going up. Our first public hearing will be on July 26th at 5:30 PM here in the boardroom. We will be looking for board feedback and adjustments, and making adjustments as needed before our second public hearing to adopt the final budget millage on Thursday, September 6th at 5:30 PM here in the boardroom. Are there any questions that I can answer for the board?
I have one just before I open it, just because I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. If you go back to your, where were we? The page six, mandated required usage. Can you just please clarify the charter school growth line? You made a comment that that is all increase. Is that not?
That, some of it is...
I want to make sure it's clarified, because I don't think it's an increase of 4.3 million. It is a, that's what our expenditure is, correct?
It, no, it is over and above what we expended.
So what is the amount that we're spending now? What's the percentage?
I don't have that with me at the moment.
So we need to know that percentage, I think. Because then, otherwise, it's kind of irrelevant if we don't know what that number is.
Right, no, this is, this is just the increase over what we spent in 17-18. It's driven by twofold, their share of the additional money that we received, as well as the fact that their growth in students is greater than what the district has, so students are actually leaving the district and going to charter schools.
Do we have any questions, comments? Ms. Belfort?
So a couple clarifications on the comment you just made, and then to the other questions that I had. Ms. Zurker, you indicated that out of that 4.2, you said an increase in the money that we're getting as well. So those are, that's partial, the categoricals that we received for school safety and for mental health, correct, is included in that 4.2 that's reflected?
That is correct, as well as the increase in FEFP. That is correct, as well as the increase in F E F P without those in there. So the 47 cents every BSA and the changes in the rest of our funding that they are allowed to have.
Okay. And then my other question, you said that they, that students are leaving the district and going to charter schools. Does that mean that we are declining in students?
The district itself, traditional schools are declining in students.
Okay. And then when, you indicated that the departments are currently working on that 10% target budget reduction. When do we anticipate having those recommendations? Will we have that prior to the budget hearing?
Yes, we will provide it to the boards via email as to what's being included or the information in general prior to the 20th, the first hearing. Remember, the first hearing is just a first look at the budget. It is not the final budget. We'll have plenty of opportunity to make adjustments between there and September.
Okay. And then one request, and this is actually for Mr. Reed. When that term notice comes out, is there an opportunity, Mr. Reed, for you to do some public education on the, the difference between impact and verbiage on that, on that tax increase so that we can make sure that the community is understanding that we are not in fact increasing taxes? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Susan.
I just had a couple of quick questions. First one was, is that, do you know how many kids offhand roughly went to, extra went to charters this year to make the 4.2? Roughly around 500?
It sounds correct, but I honestly don't have that information directly in front of me, but we can get it for the board.
Okay. How much money did we transfer into the reserves last year roughly? Did we transfer anything on top?
We did not transfer anything into the reserves.
Okay. And then?
Well, let me stop back just to be clear. We didn't transfer anything to the traditional reserves. The board did grant style funding on several initiatives. So we created committed reserves for those fundings for 1819 and 1920.
And those were for those projects that we had?
Correct.
Okay. And then on page five, it says the additional capital transfer. Is that the $5 million of transfer of capital dollars from, or is that, we were talking before about taking money away from capital and adding it to the operating, is that that piece right there?
That is correct. That is $3 million, $2 million, two, yeah, $2 million additional for maintenance expense supplies and $3.2 million for maintenance salaries.
So we're taking it out of our, so this is, says that we're taking it out of our capital outlay where we use for the renewal of all that stuff, putting it into operations to cover the cost of some of those operations dollars to offset the cost so we can get a savings.
That is correct. By statute, we're allowed to cover fully our maintenance costs. The district has not traditionally done that. It is recommendation this year from Dr. Blackburn and myself.
But we as a board haven't approved that yet.
No.
Okay. And the last piece is, is can you tell the board for a 1% raise only for teachers? Or how much out of the budget is that for the public?
I looked at that the other day. I want to say it's around 2.6 to 2.9 million. But I do not have the exact number in front of me.
So roughly for a 1% raise for teachers, it's going to cost us between 2.6 and 2.9. That's without administration. That's without all of the non-bargaining units.
That's also without 10-10, local 10-10.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Ziegler.
Thank you. A couple of clarifications on mandated required usage, page six again, school resource officers. Now, we were, according, we know and according to your documentation on revenues, we got 2.3 million. But you're showing only usage of 962,000, is that correct?
And that is because the 2.3 is in the first line of $4,23,000 committed categoricals.
So you are carrying, I was wondering where the balance of that because we have to reserve it for specific.
Correct.
Okay. And then in the committed categoricals, is that also where the mental health services 1.7 is?
That's correct.
Okay. Excellent. That's the first question. Then on capital projects, LCI 61 million. Is that the full 1.5 mil?
Yes, it is. It's.
That's a huge increase from last year, isn't that?
We did see a nice increase in the millage, yes.
And I think it was like 48 or 50 last year?
It was about 58 million last year.
It was 58?
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was 48. Must have got confused. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions? Dr. Mullins, anything to add?
No, sir.
All right. And thank you very much, Ms. Irker. Appreciate your time and effort once again. And we will move on to public comments. And we are now at public comment. And though school board policy is 0169 dot one, limits to 30 minutes, the portion of the meeting during which the public's invited participate, participate and provide public comment. It does allow the board to extend by a vote of the board, a extra time. Today, though, we have exactly 10 speakers, so we will move right into hearing them. With this guidance, each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have the clock in front of me and facing you to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statements should be directed to the board chair. The chair may interrupt or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chair may request the individual to leave the meeting. We do encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or who are watching from home. Let's begin with the first three speakers. Before speaking, please state your name, any organization you represent, and identify the topic you will be discussing. First is Anthony Calucci, followed by Tiffany Ward and Wendy Nolder.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the incoming president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. I wore my red today to give you a preview of what's going to be coming this year, and also a reminder of the policies you're pursuing, what they led to in Arizona, Colorado, North Carolina, Oklahoma, and West Virginia. The state has produced its data on teacher pay in Florida for last year. These are facts. These are things that some people still believe in. Our average pay is $1,345 behind the average pay in Florida. That's more than concerning because the cost of living in, in our district is about average, as well as the fact that our teachers are the second most experienced workforce in the state. I've heard this term cost of living increase being tossed around a lot. It's kind of like it's been approved by the puppet masters in Brevard County. Let me tell you, I, I'm not okay with a cost of living increase for our teachers. Because what that means is our teachers will perpetually be underpaid. We need a raise, not a cost of living increase. We need a raise. I want to point out that the cost of living increase is 2.8% currently. We've tried to help. I've told you last time, we asked you to prioritize pay. We asked you to stop the foolish spending. We've asked you to go after millage. We've asked you to lobby our legislators. You refuse to do all those things. You know, our teachers, the ones you praise when the standardized test scores are good and the ones you scorn when they wear the red shirts, they're fighting to continue to teach. That's what their goal is. They want to continue to teach in this county. They want their performance pay. There seems to be some kind of misunderstanding based on what I saw at the last school board meeting. Our teachers get performance pay based on flawed test scores, according to some of you on the board. They want their pay competitive with other school districts. We don't want excuses. And look, I, I do not want to hear this year, when you're looking at budget cuts, this is the union's fault. That is inexcusable. It's your fault. That is your plan to pay for teacher raises is through budget cuts. What are you going to do? It's $12 million a year to pay for all of us. We're not leaving our friends out of the, the pay raises. $12 million a year. After three years, that's $36 million. Have you told the community that's your plan to keep us competitive? Well, you need to. Own it. Thank you.
Tiffany Ward, Wendy Nolder, and Charlene Monford.
Hello. My name is Tiffany Ward, and I'm the newly hired principal at Legacy Academy, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Legacy. My name is Tiffany Ward, and like I said, I come to you with over 16 years of experience as a school leader. I have experience as a founding principal in Orange County at Central Florida Leadership Academy. I started that school with a pad of paper and the vision of the charter board. Over my seven years at that school, I grew the school from a very humble beginning of just grade six through seven to a school serving grade six through 12, and I saw the school through the very first graduating class. Last school year, I was the principal in Osceola County at Main Street High School. It's an alternative school in that district. The school earned commendable, which is the highest state rating, as I'm sure you know, for an alternative ed site. I say this to you so that you understand that I come to Legacy with experience, but also with fresh eyes and optimism. I couldn't help but want to be a part of a project that is built on heart and passion. When I met Ms. Monford, I met someone who just truly cares about the kids in this community. I've reviewed the school's FSA results, and they earned a C in the first year, and for a startup charter, this is definitely a good start. But I believe we can definitely do even better next year. Language arts did well, but math needs more assistance. Since we're a esteemed school, I've already adjusted the new master schedule to include more time for science and for math. We'll be implementing Project Lead the Way, Math is Not Difficult, and the Jason Project. After reviewing the 90-day notice, we need to improve in the area of ESE compliance. I am state certified principal with certification in ESE, elementary ed, and speech. I plan to hire two full-time ESE staff to assist with compliance, and have already begun interviewing, even though I've only been there about three days. I have toured the new facility several times already. I've been told it's on target to open for the state, for the start of the school by the foreman. I'd like to close by making a formal request to this board to lift the 90-day termination so that I may begin the hard work that needs to be done at Legacy, and that way we may get full access to our CSP grant. Thank you for your time. I look forward to working with Brevard County Schools, and I look forward to working with this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Nolder, Charlene Monford, and Kevin Spurlock.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Wendy Nolder, and I'm here representing the board of Legacy Academy Charter School as a recently elected board member. I was invited and elected on June 29th to join the board for Legacy and to provide my public charter school experience. I'm a founding teacher for Odyssey Charter School since it opened back in 1999, and I became its principal in 2010, and have been serving in this capacity for Odyssey Schools ever since. I'm more than happy to assist Legacy Board this year and share my expertise and what I've learned over the years that might be of help and assistance in serving the community for Legacy Academy Charter School. I would also like to encourage the board to lift the 90-day termination of Legacy.
Charlene Monford, Kevin Spurlock, and Linda Tripp.
Good morning, school board members, and incoming superintendent Mullins. My name is Charlene Monford. I live at 430 Dumbarton Avenue in Titusville, Florida. I am the founder and recently elected board chair for Legacy Academy. Please know that the board of Legacy Academy has followed your instructions, and at our most recent board meetings on June 29th and July the 7th, we made the following changes, additions, and approvals to Legacy Academy. We appointed Ms. Wendy Nolder that you just heard from as a board member. As she told you, she has more than 19 years of experience as a charter school founder and principal. I resigned my position as principal and was reappointed to the board and recently elected again as the board chair. We've had a principal, Ms. Tiffany Ward, that you just heard from. The board will continue our relationship with the Arnold Law Firm on a retainer basis to help us with any challenges we might have. The board has approved a professional services agreement to hire Constance Ortiz at the Green Apple School Management Firm. Ms. Ortiz is a pioneer in the state of Florida and Brevard County in the charter school movement. She will help guide our board and school in the areas of compliance and technical support. We will continue our financial services relationship with Charter School Services Corporation. We recently approved our 2018, 2019, 2019, 2020 budget that ends with a positive fund balance in both years. We've converted a loan that we had to a recoverable grant and signed a lease amendment reducing our school lease for year two with our developer to ensure a favorable year-end balance. Our new building is on target and ready for us, will be ready for us to move into this school year. And as our new principal has stated, we did earn a grade C this year. With all the support and things that we're putting in place, we look forward to earning a letter grade of A our next school year. We are respectfully requesting, on behalf of our community and this board, that you end the 90-day termination notice for Legacy Academy. Thank you.
Kevin Spurlock, Linda Tripp, and Braxton Paget.
Good morning, board members. My name is Kevin Spurlock. Two years ago, myself, along with my wife Eva and our daughter Isabella, because of job requirements, relocated to Titusville from a top-performing school district in Wake County, North Carolina. We researched it, and the schools at that time were rated about a seven or eight. Now, according to my research assistant Eva, they're trending at about a four in this area in Titusville. We enrolled our daughter in the assigned school for her area, and within the first two months, we knew we had a problem. While she was receiving accolades from her teacher and honor roll certifications every quarter, I believe these were based more on her behavior rather than actual academic accomplishments. My testing of our daughter's progress at home indicated a significant decline in grade level performance, and yet she still received honor certification for the school year. By the summer, we knew we had to make a change. It was then that we heard about Legacy Academy. Was it a risk? Yes, it was an untested institution that was just getting started. But that's how desperate we felt the need to make a change was. The first half of the school year was challenging, to say the least. As is the case with any new institution, there was a weeding out process with staff and trial and error phase to determine which systems were working and which needed adjusting. The key is, they learn from their mistakes. And by the second half of the year, with the right educators in place, our daughter not only performed at grade level, she thrived and finished at the top of her class. Her performance and the performance of the school as a whole at the end of grade testing, while not ideal, was significantly ahead of the average for the county schools and ahead of the school she previously attended. I would like to make this point clear to the board. If Legacy ceases to exist, returning to the county school system is not an option for our child. Homeschooling, online education, and private tutoring are far more attractive choices as opposed to an institution that is in need of a major overhaul. At Legacy, we have a passionate staff and administration that listens and responds to the needs of the parents and students. And beginning this year... to the needs of the parents and students, and beginning this year, a safe, positive learning space for our children to grow and develop. I thank the Board for your time this morning. I appreciate it.
Linda Tripp, Braxton Paget, Vanessa Skipper.
All right. My name is Linda Tripp. I'm here to talk for Legacy Academy and about the Project Lead the Way curriculum. It's our STEM curriculum at our school, our STEAM curriculum at our school. I'm really nervous up here, so I apologize. What is the most... Sorry. What captivates me most about this curriculum is that it's problem-based. And so the students start off with a problem, and they have to learn all about how to solve the problem, and in the end... Sorry. It's all hands-on learning. We start with three different activities. The students will gain knowledge through those activities, and then the students go to a project, and then they learn more about the project, and then in the end, they are able to solve the problem through teacher-guided solutions. What is the most amazing thing about it is, though, to me, is that the students are able to collaborate with each other, and it's all open-ended. And so the students, they don't have to come up with one specific answer. They don't have to come up with one right answer. Any answer can be the right answer as long as it follows the rubric and they've met the challenges. And so the students are able to, through small group work, guide each other through working through the solutions of the problem. It's so amazing to see the kids working together and getting along and learning how to get along and learning how to problem-solve without having a teacher directing them. The teacher works more as a facilitator in this respect, and they walk around the room and they help and they guide them, but the kids have to come up with these problems all by themselves. And so in the end, there was a little problem that they had to solve. Like, let's say, one of the kids fell down and broke their hand on a jungle gym. How would they solve the problem? So they go from learning about the bones in the body and the organs of the body into doing activities to show, like, bone puzzles and exploration stations, and in the end, they have to construct a cast out of different materials that would help support and the student's broken bone, and... I'm sorry, I'm so nervous to be up here. But it's really a great program, and I can't wait for... to implement this in the school and for all the students to be a part of it.
Braxton Paget, Vanessa Skipper, and Monica Knight.
Then why wouldn't they be in a D school?
Hi, my name is Braxton Paget, and I'm here on behalf of Legacy Academy. It's good to see all of you again. I really appreciate everybody from Legacy who's gotten up here today. If there's one thing I'm sure you guys would agree with, is that this school has a lot of heart, and I can tell you one thing, they have really been fighting over the last couple of months to address every concern that you guys have raised. And I understand that there is some concern on the Board that perhaps not every single thing that was identified in the spring has been addressed. We certainly feel that we have. The one thing that I know that would still be an outstanding deficiency is the curriculum plan and the staffing plan. Those, we're still not fully in compliance with those, but several months ago, we did submit updated staffing plan and curriculum plans, which at this time, we're not really sure exactly what the status of those are. We understand that they're still waiting for approval. Once those are approved, it's our understanding that essentially everything has been cured to the extent that it could be cured. And if there's things that just happened that could not be cured, we have put measures in place to ensure that in the future, these things don't happen again. Really, the biggest problem with this school this past year has been compliance, and we've done a number of things to ensure that there is compliance moving forward for next year. One of the biggest things is bringing on Green Apple as a consultant in compliance. Green Apple has a very well-documented record of success in the charter school community, and they're going to be there. They signed a contract that was approved on Friday by the governing board. They've officially hired Green Apple to be a consultant, to work with them throughout the year. I really don't think compliance is going to be an issue next year. They also have a principal who has a proven track record of successfully leading a school, including all the elements of compliance that have been an issue. And one of the things that we saw as the grades have come out is that even though Legacy had a rocky year, had to move in the middle of the year, they still were able to pull off a C. And really, when you do look at charter schools in their first year, that is a success. You know, there's not a lot of schools that come out the gate getting A, but they're certainly already have a plan in place for how they could even get that grade up. So I think that to the extent that there are still outstanding concerns, certainly Sean and I would love to sit down with the district or let's have a better line of communication open so that we can figure out what things have not been cured to your satisfaction, and we're more than willing to move on those things. And so that's what I would ask, is that to the extent that you guys aren't satisfied, if you could please let us know. We're here and we want to keep Legacy open. Thank you.
Vanessa Skipper, Monica Knight, and Connie Rook.
Good morning, members of the Board, Dr. Mullins, Vanessa Skipper, Vice President of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. I'd like to recognize a couple people before I say many things that I've always said every time I speak to you. First, I have someone visiting with me, Dylan Brosny. He is an incoming junior and dual-enrolled student at Viera High School and part of the Marching Hawks, and excitingly, will be eligible to vote in the 2020 election. And then the other person I'd like to recognize is Dan Bennett. Did he sneak out? Dan Bennett? Dan is going back into the classroom this fall, and we are very excited for his new adventure, but very grateful for the leadership that he's given the Brevard Federation of Teachers. John Quincy Adams said, "If your actions inspire others to dream more, learn more, do more, and become more, you are a leader." So I want to thank you for doing all of those things for me. The true mark of a leader is to be someone that's willing to step out with a bold course of action. Teachers in our classrooms every single day plan for what we're doing. Class period, we don't just plan for one day. We plan for where we're going to be in a week and a month to the end of the school year to make sure that our students have made the learning gains and made the strides that they need in order to make it in the next level. It's frustrating to me and to teachers all around me that we seem to have no plan for making our public schools as strong as they could be. And part of what makes our schools strong are the teachers that serve in the classrooms every single day. We must retain effective teachers. We need to keep great teachers. I sit here and I hear about all this money that is leaving our public school coffers and going to charter schools. Are we going to be the people that are pulling the bricks away from our public schools? Or are we going to be the people that are putting the bricks back and fortifying them? I recently received a very pretty glossy flyer inviting me to enroll my son in a charter school. He'll stay in his public school. His school is a Title I school. I love it very much. Served him well, served my other son well. They don't have the kind of money to send out a glossy recruiting flyer. Our priorities are in the wrong place, and as teachers, as parents, as members of this community, we're asking you to put the bricks back, not take them away. Thank you.
Monica Knight and Connie Rook.
Hi, good morning. Like all millennials, I'm going to read mine from my phone. Good morning, my name is Monica Knight. I live at 119 Sunset Drive, Cocoa Beach, Florida. I have two children who attend Brevard Public Schools, and I have the privilege to be the principal of Odyssey Charter Junior Senior High and Odyssey Preparatory Academy. I am here representing our students, families, and Board of Directors of Odyssey to request that you approve a 10-year renewal for Odyssey Preparatory Academy today instead of the five-year renewal that is being recommended. This request is sought because of our almost 20 years of dedication and success in the city of Palm Bay and its children. Won't you please note that Odyssey Preparatory Academy is 100% poverty. Odyssey Charter School is 73% poverty and are the highest-performing schools this past year in the city of Palm Bay's traditional public schools. This past spring, Odyssey Preparatory Academy received a call, like Odyssey Charter has in the past, from the Charter School Growth Fund. The Charter School Growth Fund, originally funded by Walton and Gates, was originally funded by Walton and Gates for the purpose of replicating high-performing charter schools recognized for our students that are extremely high-performing in gains. They will be visiting our schools to see our model this year and to ensure to help high-poverty, high-minority schools continue to achieve across the country. This spring, Odyssey Charter and Odyssey Prep tied as the second highest-performing schools in the city of Palm Bay, outperforming surrounding elementary, middle, and high schools, often with much lower poverty levels. It should be known again, Odyssey Preparatory Academy is 100% poverty. 100% of the children live below the federal poverty line, so outperforming at that level is a major accomplishment, considering the top-performing school in that area is 17% poverty. There's a big discrepancy there. When ranking schools by poverty, which I sent you earlier in an email, Odyssey Preparatory Academy is the highest performer in the District of Brevard. We are fully committed to high-poverty, high-minority children in this community. The reason for our request for today is to request you to give us a 10-year contract renewal rather than a five-year renewal. This would give us a favorable impact on our annual rating for SMP Global and keep our interest rates competitive, which may assist our Board with things like bond financing. The Florida statute says in order to facilitate long-term financing for charter school construction, charter schools operating for a minimum of three years and demonstrating exemplary academic programming and fiscal management are eligible for 15-year charter renewals. The following sub-paragraph states that the 15-year charter renewal may be granted, may be granted, and shall be granted for charter schools receiving a school grade of A or B. This is our second year as a B at Odyssey Preparatory Academy. I beg you to compare us to any other 100% poverty school in the district. Although there is nothing that says you have to give us a 10- or 15-year charter in statute at this time, this also doesn't say that you cannot.
Thank you, ma'am.
I please advise and hope that you can do that. Thank you.
There she is.
Good morning. My name is Connie Rook, and I'm a representative of the Moms Demand Action of Brevard County, and I'm here today to talk to you about red flag laws. Like many mass shooters, the 19-year-old that killed 17 people and injured 17 others at the high school in Parkland, Florida, he displayed warning signs prior to the shooting. He was expelled from school. The student and teachers reported that he displayed threatening behavior, and his mother contacted law enforcement on numerous occasions regarding his behavior, and he was very much known to possess firearms. What could have prevented that? A red flag law. This is a policy that empowers family members and law enforcement to seek an extreme risk protection order, and it's a court order temporarily restricting a person's access to guns when they pose a danger to themselves or others. Now, the good news is, is that Florida has enacted a red flag law in March of 2018, and states around the country are turning to this policy as a common sense solution to reduce gun violence and gun suicide. Eight states have now enacted red flag laws, and at least 28 other states are working towards red flag laws because of Parkland. Maryland recently passed a red flag law also, but is not scheduled to go into effect until October, and it could have very well prevented the tragedy in Annapolis on June 28th. When a person is in crisis, loved ones and law enforcement are often the first to see signs they pose a threat. Red flag laws allow them to seek from a court to remove guns from dangerous situations. Mass shooters often display warning signs before committing violent acts. A nationwide study of mass shootings from 2009 to 2016 revealed that at least 42% of those incidents, there's documentation that the attacker exhibited dangerous warning signs before the shooting. Suicide accounts for nearly 2/3 of gun deaths in the United States, 2/3. Reducing a suicidal person's access to firearms can save their life. Nine out of 10 suicide attempts with a gun result in death, and by contrast, most people who attempt suicide by other means live and do not eventually die. Access to firearms triples the risk of death by suicide, and I have all the sites for these. This new law has already been used in Florida and several counties. In Escambia, Volusia Lake, there was just an article in the paper today about it online, and it has very likely saved and prevented injuries and saved lives. So why am I sharing this with you today? It's very interesting to note that very few people that we have talked to in this county even know that this law exists, and that there is a mechanism to protect the community from people that should not have access to guns. For us, the most critical people that should be aware of this red flag law is you, and the staff and the teachers that work every day with our children. So our question to you is, what are you doing to train staff and develop policy regarding warning signs and procedures for coordinating quickly with law enforcement to be able to use the red flag law and keep our children and our schools safe? So, thank you.
Thank you. The Board wishes to thank this morning's speakers. Your willingness to engage with us and to share your passion is greatly appreciated. Do any Board members have any comments? Mr. Ziegler.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. I wanted to make a comment to all the Legacy people that have shown up here, and I wanted to congratulate them for listening and for actually moving forward on hiring a seasoned principal and also Constance Ortiz with Green Apple. You couldn't have chosen a better leader to help guide you. I have tremendous faith in her. However, I would have to hear from staff about clearing the complacency concerns, the deficiencies. Right now, the only reason, and I do understand, and this Board does understand, and this Board, I can assure you, does not want to close the school. We understand that the reason urgency right now is the CSP grant has a time limitation on it. As we also all understand, the school will open because the ALJ will not hear or opine on anything until after the school opens. So technically, between now and the beginning of school year, nothing's going to change other than the CSP grant. The only way that I could move forward is if staff told me they felt confident that all the deficiencies, or at least not all, I'm sorry, that the majority of them were satisfied and that there was confidence that they all would be addressed. And I don't see... The CSP grant is just an unfortunate issue in this conversation, but I do want to let you know that I do recognize the efforts that are being made and the decisions that you made. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Belfort.
Had an opportunity on Sunday to meet with Ms. Monford and the new principal of Legacy and tour the new facility, and like Mr. Ziegler, wanted to give them kudos for all of the hard work that they have done. New facility is beautiful. They are doing a wonderful job. The contractor is working seven days around the clock, I think, to try to meet those deadlines, and Ms. Monford and I had an opportunity to talk so she could update me on all of the work that they have been doing along with Green Apple and making progress towards and ensuring that things will run more smoothly in the future. So absolutely, congratulations to them on all of that work. Like Mr. Ziegler, I had a conversation with staff this morning requesting an update on corrections of all of the compliance issues, and there are some outstanding things. So, Braxton, are you still here? If you would please get with Amy so that you can make sure that you understand what those items are so that we can continue to move forward on resolving those.
Any other comments? All right. We've been at it for just over, right about an hour and a half. Does anybody need a quick break? All right, we've got quite a bit ahead of us, so that moves us into the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins.
There are 32 agenda items under this category, 10 with prior information.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any Board member wish to pull any item?
F-23.
F-23, Ms. Deskovic.
29, Mental Health Services.
F-29. F-29. Mr. Ziegler. Any others? Hearing none. Pam, would you please pull items F-23 and F-29 for discussion? And I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent items with the exception of the items that were pulled for discussion.
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Deskovich. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. We will begin with item F-23, your motion, Ms. Deskovich.
I just had some concern.
You need to make a motion.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. F-23 by Ms. Deskovich, seconded by Ms. Belford. Thank you for that. And Ms. Deskovich, your discussion.
Thanks, Mr. Craig. I just had some concerns because we've got the change notice just this morning, Penny. So if you can tell me what changed. I know we, an email from Mr. Ziegler came yesterday to you that I was copied on that saw from three years down to one year. But I haven't had time to go back and read through and see what changed. And Pam didn't note exactly what changed. So if you can just summarize that, please. Thank you.
The three years was an error that was left in the document from back several months ago when we first presented at Retreat to Board the opportunity to expand. We had worked with Cigna to make it 17 months, August 1st through December 2019, because at this point we have to have a pharmacy rep for 2019 with a 12-month renewal. Unfortunately, that got put on the agenda without realizing the 36 months was in there. And I thank Mr. Ziegler for his question. We had that corrected in getting the documents, the corrected documents in this morning so that you had the correct paperwork.
Was the entire document replaced? I guess my question is, I'm sorry we couldn't do this offline, but I didn't have time this morning.
That's okay. The first two pages only were replaced. Everything else, the discounts, the pricing, everything remains the same. The only change is in the first, the two pages that are attached to the agenda, which are the first two pages of the contract. And it just changed the dates. It took it from 36 months from August 1st, which would not, was not correct, to August 1st through December 2019 with the option for a 12-month renewal for calendar year 2020.
2020, okay, I see it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Ziegler.
Yes, thank you for catching, for getting that all corrected. And thank you for advocating for the savings while it's nice that we're going to receive about $2 million in savings before the end of next year. I am a bit dismayed that the bid didn't work out because I do believe there's a lot more to be saved. And I also appreciate you clarifying that we will be going out on bid next year so that we can look to capture those savings. And I just wanted to make that clear that this, make sure we publicly state we will be going out on bid next year to improve our healthcare and our costs for our taxpayers and our employees. And thank you for your work.
You're welcome. And just to be more clear, any bid we do will be for the full package, our health insurance as well as our pharmacy to ensure the best deal possible.
I absolutely agree. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Susan.
Thank you. So if you look at the first letter of the two agenda items, it still claims to be 36 months commencing on August 1st, 2018. So the first document on our scheduled financial charges and then the next one goes to the RX. Can you explain that? Am I misreading this?
I grabbed the wrong agenda item, so I don't have it directly in front of me. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I just didn't want to prove something that they could then come back around.
Yeah, I grabbed the wrong agenda item when I walked up here.
If you read the scheduled financial charges, right? Read the first.
Let me go back and get it.
It's okay. Read Section 1, "Not Withstand the Foregoing All Provisions; This Agreement Responsible Law shall continue in effect for no less than 36 months commencing on August 1st, 2018." It's V, Section 1, V. Just, you know, if this is just the letter from them coming to us, you know, if we could just remove it, I don't know if it makes a difference. I just didn't want any kind of.
So we ran into document issues like this before. We can approve it based on what we understand.
The letter is not what we're, because that's a letter from them. Yeah. It's a good point out, but that's the letter that came to us. But the document that we're actually approving is the actual, which one are we approving?
We're approving the one that I emailed to the Board this morning and I believe Ms. Escobar changed it on the agenda item. The piece that comes, goes on the agenda and does get signed is the letter dated July 9th, second paragraph effective as of August 1st, 2018. Where, excuse me, Mr. Susan, where did you see 36 months?
If you go to Section 1, subsection V.
You have an old copy that's been changed as of this month.
Okay, it just didn't, it's not changed on the agenda. As long as the intent of the Board is to say that we are going to go to RFP next year, then that's okay.
What is the date of the letter that we're approving, please?
July 9th.
July 9th. So the July 3rd letter that is attached to our current item is not appropriate to this.
No, I provided to Ms. Escobar. I did see the change go. I'm not sure what happened there, if it's just timing. But the current letter says, "Shall continue in effect for the period August 1st, 2018 through December 31st, 2019 with an option for 12-month extension through December 31st, 2020."
Ms. Enval, is there a necessity from a parliamentary aspect to, since there are two separate letters under the same item, action item, or excuse me, consent item? Do we need to have an amended motion to remove the one that is not relevant? Or do we, can we just do that in another fashion?
As long as you are making it clear which one you are approving, you can do that now.
Do we need to have a formal amendment to the motion to do that?
You can do that to be clear if you want to do that.
So I think it'd be best to do that. If we could do, I would entertain an amended motion to accept item F-23 with the exception of removing the July 3rd letter from consideration.
Move to approve.
Yes, Ms. Belford.
I'll second for discussion.
Moved, sorry, motion, what was from Mr., the amendment was by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Belford. Yes, Ms. Belford.
So it would be my recommendation from a parliamentary perspective to table that item to the end of today's agenda and see if Pam can go in and put in the correct attachment so there's no mix-up as to what we're approving. Because that scheduled financial charges does require a note of Board approval on there. So removing that from the item, I think we're still going to have to come back and revisit that. But if we could table that motion just to the end of today's agenda, get the correct letter up there, then we can approve that motion and things will not be messy.
Okay, I think what they were saying is that the one that we would actually sign is the one from July 9th. So by removing the entire July 3rd letter.
But we don't have the July 9th letter up there. So you would in essence be signing a letter.
It's that one.
It's two different documents.
Oh, okay.
So you would in essence be signing a document that the Board had not yet approved.
I understand. Okay. So we have an amendment to the amendment. Ms. Belford has moved to table. I get to pull out my motions guide. It's so exciting.
Vote down the.
Yes. Vote down the amendment and then do a motion to table.
Then make motion to table and then go.
Mr. Susan, I appreciate the assistance, but we have a motion on the table and I'm looking for a second. The motion is an amendment by Ms. Belford to table, which means to the end of the meeting. This, so that we can have the appropriate letter attached. Seconded by Ms. Deskovich. Is there any discussion on that? I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Hearing none. That amendment passes. The amendment that Mr. Susan made, no, wait a minute, that I made, no, actually, Mr. Susan did because I just stated it, was to accept F-23 with the exception of the July 3rd letter. All in favor?
The whole thing's tabled.
The whole thing's tabled at that point, up until that point. You are correct. Thank you. But we will have to go back and get rid of those. All right. F-29, Mr. Ziegler, your motion.
Move to accept, F-29.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan. Mr. Ziegler, your discussion.
Thank you all for coming up, but I don't have any questions for you. I wanted to just make it clear to our public, since this is just a consent item, that we all know this is a very big part of school safety and the Marjory Stoned Douglas Act. What I think is interesting to point out and that I want our community to know is when you look at what is being done for $1.7 million, it really doesn't seem like a lot. To that point, it's less funding than the SROs. We know the SROs weren't enough funding to do what we needed to do. And I don't believe that what we're doing, $1.7 million, is what our community expects would cover 82 schools. So the point is, is that we need to still talk to our legislature about adequate funding to do a more in-depth job of mental health services. But I commend staff. It, oh my God, it is so in-depth. It is so thorough. There are so many components that they are discussing that I'm really hoping that our community appreciates the work that is being put in by staff. But I also hope that the community understands that we need a lot more funding to make this a very thorough implementation of what we expect as a community for mental health services. So thank you very much.
Ms. Belford.
I would once again second Mr. Ziegler's comments. And to Ms. Rook who spoke this morning to us about those red flag laws, part of this mental health plan is the mental health training for all of the staff in the district. And so that's a big part of that focus. But I had the opportunity to meet with Dr. Thede this morning prior to the Board meeting to go over some of the changes in this plan. And I would point out that not only have they done some amazing things with a very small amount of funding, but we had to change some things because the state was very prescriptive in what we could utilize those funds for. And in some instances, there were changes made to this plan that were not the original idea of how we would address the mental health services in the district. And we had to, Dr. Thede and her team were, in my opinion, pretty genius in figuring out a way to utilize those funds to have positive impact for our students. But absolutely, we need to make sure our community knows, we've said all along that the funding for school resource officers is one part of the response to student safety. This is a critical part of that as well, in my opinion. And so I thank you all for all of your hard work. I know it has not been an easy task and you have accomplished it in a very small window with some very last-minute expectations from the state. So thank you. I appreciate you.
Ms. Deskovich.
I just want to concur with the comments before. Thank you, Dr. Thede, for your hard work in putting this together. I, for one, for those that don't have the document in front of you, it, we're getting 16 more social workers in our schools. Like that alone, to me, just, that has so many more students reached and helped. And I'm extremely grateful for the funds being put towards mental health. I'm really excited about the UCA mental health screener. As Dr. Thede knows, I think that, although, Ms. Rook, I haven't, there you are, I haven't read the red flag law. I made a note to email you later to get more information. I'm imagining that UCLA screener will help with some of those things. So thank you very much to the state for giving us these funds and for Dr. Thede and her staff for working hard to make it comply with their requirements. And I'm looking forward to seeing the benefits with our students.
Any other comments? Then I will call the question. Please vote. You should be able to do it electronically. And the motion passes 5-0. Does anybody need a break at this point? All righty. And we will continue on. And to the action agenda, Dr. Mullins.
Mr. Craig, there are a total of 13 action items for us to go through. The first eight are policy revisions. All of the policies you will be taking action on this morning are board-sponsored policies and General Counsel Enval will review these with us. Ms. Enval?
Thank you. As you recall, we started all this with a Board work session on May 15th where I walked the Board through your policies. And these are your policies, which is why I'm going to help guide this process. Cabinet met on June 11th, 2018. The Rule Development Workshop was held on June 12th, 2018, where the public had its first opportunity to provide input. This morning, July 11th, or July 10th, 2018, is the School Board meeting during which the second public hearing is held. Please note that all proposed revisions encompass the suggested language from NEOLA. First is Board Policy 0100, Definitions. This policy is being revised to update the definitions applicable to School Board policies. Particular definitions added or revised include the following: apps and web services, district, technology resources, and wireless communication devices.
Thank you, Ms. Enval. Is there anyone here who has come to speak on the proposed revisions to Policy 0100 Anyone here to speak on 0100 Definitions? Hearing none. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revisions to School Board Policy 0100 Definitions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Belford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Enval.
Next is School Board Policy 0112, Geographical District Boundaries. This policy is being revised to clarify state designations regarding boundaries of Brevard County, Florida, and other changes in compliance with applicable Florida law. The policy is being renamed from Boundaries to Geographical District Boundaries for clarity.
Thank you, Ms. Enval. Is there anyone here who has come to speak on the proposed revisions to Policy 0112, Geographical District Boundaries? Anyone want to speak on Policy 0112, Geographical District and Boundaries? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revisions to School Board Policy 0112, Geographical District and Boundaries.
Move to approve.
Moved by Ms. Deskovich, seconded by Ms. Belford, I believe. And is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Enval.
We now move to School Board Policy 0121, Authority. This policy is being revised to clarify the authority and responsibilities of School Board members and other changes in compliance with applicable Florida law. Particular areas of revision include the following: policy title change to responsibilities and authority of the Board, and additional language clarification.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who has come to speak on the proposed revisions to Policy 0121, Authority? Anyone here to speak on Policy 0121, Authority? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the revisions to School Board Policy 0121, Authority.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Enval.
Next is School Board Policy 0123, Code of Ethics. This policy is being revised to clarify School Board members' responsibilities and to clarify definitions, prohibited activities, and other changes in compliance with applicable Florida law. Particular areas of revision include the following: the title of policy, the standards of boardmanship slash code of ethics, and additional language clarification.
Thank you, Ms. Enval. Is there anyone here who has come to speak on the proposed revisions to Policy 0123, Code of Ethics? Anyone wish to speak on the proposed revisions to Policy 0123, Code of Ethics? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the revisions to School Board Policy 0123, Code of Ethics.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Susan. I'm sorry, Ms. Belford, I did see your hand and I did not.
I was pointing at Mr. Susan to give him the chance to chime in there.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Enval.
Next is School Board Policy 0131, Legislative. This policy is being revised to clarify the procedures for policy development and to clarify definitions, development, and adopting procedures, Board actions, and other changes in compliance with applicable Florida law. Particular areas of revision include the following: policy title change to legislative slash policymaking, definition revisions, and language clarifications.
Thank you, Ms. Enval. Is there anyone here who has come to speak on the proposed revisions to Policy 0131, Legislative? Anyone wish to speak on Policy 0131: Legislative? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the revisions to school board policy 0131: Legislative.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Only three left. Ms. Enval.
We now move to School Board Policy 0131.2: Variances and Waivers. This policy is being revised to comport with the Florida statutes regarding variances of waivers. Particular areas of revision include the following: definitions of substantial hardship, procedures for filing a petition for variance or waiver of board policy.
Thank you, Ms. Enval. Is there anyone here who has come to speak on the proposed revisions to Policy 0131.2: Variances and Waivers? I don't think that was. Anyone care to speak on Policy 0131.2: Variances and Waivers? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the revisions to school board policy 0131.2: Variances and Waivers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Duszkiewicz, seconded by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Enval.
We now move to School Board Policy 0132: Executive. This policy is being revised to define the executive responsibilities of the superintendent.
Is there anyone who has come to speak on the proposed revisions to Policy 0132: Executive? Anyone wish to speak on Policy 0132: Executive? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the revisions to school board policy 0132: Executive.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Duszkiewicz. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Enval.
Now we're at School Board Policy 0133: Judicial. This policy is being revised to define the board's powers to enter final orders. The policy is also being renamed to quasi-judicial.
Thank you, Ms. Enval. Is there anyone here who has come to speak on the proposed revisions to Policy 0133: Judicial? Anyone wish to speak on the revisions to Policy 0133: Judicial? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the revisions to school board policy 0133: Judicial.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Ms. Duszkiewicz, seconded by Ms. Belford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Ms. Enval. Was that the last one? No, that is the last one. This concludes policies. The next action agenda item is G-51 on the approval of the superintendent's employment agreement between the school board of Brevard County and Dr. Mark W. Mullins.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Duszkiewicz. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Craig, for leading the negotiations on this. I know it was a lot of work and a lot of detail that was analyzed. Very proud of this board for accomplishing this.
Any other discussion? Ms. Belford.
I'll just second that sentiment. I know that it has been a time-consuming process for you, Mr. Craig, and I appreciate all of your work on it.
It's well worth it. Hearing no other discussion, please vote. The motion passes 5-0. At this time, I'd like to congratulate again Dr. Mullins for your official title as the next superintendent of Brevard Public Schools. Thank you very much. If you'd like to say something at this time, you're more than welcome to.
Well, first, thank you to the board for your trust and your confidence in my leadership to serve as the next superintendent. I have to admit, it was a little surreal this morning as we welcomed 16 administrators into the ranks of school leadership. And I couldn't help but recall 18 years ago, probably around this same time, sitting in the audience with my wife and very young family at the time, and having the opportunity to move from the ranks of teacher into administration. And the privilege to sit here this morning beneath our mission, and now continue to serve Brevard Public Schools as the superintendent, ultimately to serve our kids across our great district with excellence as a standard, is truly an honor, and I appreciate it, and will work very hard with you, and work very hard for our community to continue to serve our students with excellence. So thank you.
Standing. Thank you, Dr. Mullins. And then I will now turn it back to you, Dr. Mullins.
And admittedly, I've lost track of where we are.
We are at the next action item under G-52: Purchasing.
There we are. All right. Thank you, Pam. Next is Item G-52 on Purchasing Solicitations.
I'll entertain a motion to approve G-52 Purchasing Solicitations.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Belford, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. The motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins.
Item G-53 is on Department-School Initiated Agreements.
It's our motion to approve G-53 on Department-School Initiated Agreements.
Move to approve. Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Mr. Susan. Any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. The motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins.
Item G-54 on Approval of Pineapple Cove Classical Academy Contract.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Duszkiewicz. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. I would like to ask Ms. Archer a few questions. If she can come forward, please. Thank you, and also thank you for all you do. I know you're overwhelmed by all of the choice, things that you manage, including all of the charter schools. My question is really more for Odyssey's request, but because Pineapple Cove is also an excellent, high-performing charter school, I thought I would ask the question now. The first part of the question is, is the renewal process that occurs every five years, is, how time-consuming is that? How different is that than a termination process? In other words, would you prefer less renewals or more frequent renewals?
Well, by contract, they are renewed at the end of their contract. So OPA, Odyssey, has a five-year contract. If you were talking about Palm Bay Academy, who has a 20-year contract, they wouldn't go through their renewal for quite some time. So it varies from contract to contract. The renewal process is basically a culmination of site visits, compliance, monitoring through charter schools, and things that we collect year to year. It is not just a one-and-done type of scenario, so that the charter schools who are going to be coming through to renewal know that if they are having problems, they've already heard from us. We've worked through it, either through notices of concern or notices of deficiency for, in order for them to cure. And those who have not had those issues, we just move forward, and then we negotiate a new contract.
Okay. Is Pineapple Cove in the same opportunity as Odyssey that they could be renewed for more than five years, or are they in a position where five years is the only option?
Right now, they are in the same position as Odyssey, excuse me, let me clarify, Odyssey Preparatory Academy, because remember, Odyssey is one contract, OPA is another contract. So they too have been in business for a period of time, but the statute says they must have an A or B of three of four years of their contract. And so Pineapple Cove actually, in order to roll in their high school into this contract, has not finished their five-year contract. So we are ceasing that contract to open a new five-year.
Okay. So for the case of Pineapple Cove, then five years is really the only option because they don't have full qualification for anything beyond. Okay, that's my only question. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have questions.
That's okay. I was trying to run away.
No, because of his questions, I have now. I now have questions. So Pineapple Cove chose to do an entire new contract now that they're rolling in. They could have gone separate like Odyssey.
Yes.
But Odyssey chose because they probably had 20 years plus. They didn't want to start over with the, would that be?
So think of it as in terms of the MSID numbers. Odyssey has one MSID number, OPA has another. Pineapple Cove, instead of having one MSID number and then a second one for their high schools, because in their, in Hillsdale's college view, which is what they have a partnership with, they are a K-12 school, and they would rather operate as one because then the principal oversees the whole school.
So is this year one for them, since the high school portion is just, and now they have to go five years before they can ask for a longer contract? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Is there any discussion on G-54: Approval of Pineapple Cove Classical Academy Contract? And hearing none, please vote. Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins.
And our last action item is G-55 on Approved Renewal Charter Contract for Odyssey Preparatory Academy.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ziegler, seconded by Ms. Belford. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. I would like to make a motion to amend that to a 10-year renewal, because they have been an excellent charter. They have worked very well with the district. They've proven themselves, and I think it's less of a burden on staff as far as renewal process is concerned. Unless anybody has an objection as to why we should keep it on five-year, I'd like to make a motion to amend that to 10 years.
I'll second.
Motion to amend the motion to approve, to make it a 10-year contract vice five-year. Is that what you heard, Ms. Enval?
That's what I heard.
Okay.
Can I get staff to, Ms. Archer, to come up and explain, if she has anything to input on this?
All right. We have the amended motion on the table. And Ms. Archer's getting her workout. Sorry.
So the way we operate in our office is not a matter of work. It's a matter of doing right by all of our schools. And if you put into precedence this 10-year contract, even though statute doesn't necessarily allow it, then we are setting a precedence. And every other charter school who wants to ask for this, I feel, would have to be treated in the same way. So OPA's history is an F, a C, a B, a B. By statute, three of four years should either be an A or a B. So they do not meet statutory language for additional time on their contract. It does say, and Dr. Knight's right, the board can make grant it, but I just feel if we interpret this, and Odyssey is a stickler for sticking to contractual language and statutory language, in this case, I believe the same.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Belford.
Ms. Archer, so if OPA comes back, and next year they are an A school, they would then qualify for an extension, right?
They would have to fill out their five-year contract before they would, or they would have to request an amended contract, and we could go through our processes again.
Okay. So that's my clarifying question. So if they pull an A for the next one, they could then request an amended contract, so they don't have to wait to the end of the five-year to potentially get that 10-year and be in alignment with the statutory language?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Dr. Mullins, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Then the first, I will call the question on the amendment that Mr. Ziegler made, the amendment to G-55 to make it a 10-year contract. Pam, is that a, is that what you have in there?
Yes.
Okay. So we do have electronic means of voting, so I will call the question. Please vote. The motion fails 2 to 3. We now have the original item, G-55, to approve the renewal charter contract for Odyssey Preparatory Academy as originally presented. Is there any more discussion on that?
No, sir.
Please vote. Motion passes 5-0. We will move on to the information agenda, which includes items for board review, and we will be brought back for action at a subsequent meeting. No action will be taken on these items tonight. Dr. Mullins.
There are four items under the information category.
Does any member wish to discuss an item?
No, sir.
Hearing none. We will move on to board member reports and discussion points. We do have a couple of discussion points this morning. Ms. Duszkiewicz opting out, and school grades. Can you please lead us in that?
I received a, I've received a few phone calls and a few emails from teachers in one of our schools that received an "I," an incomplete, for not having enough students that participated in the state standardized tests. And it's a complicated issue. I 100% support students opting out. My own children have opted out. She's rightfully upset because she might be losing out on her performance pay from the state. The school is usually an A school and high-performing. And I told her I would bring it before the board to discuss. Her suggestions were maybe making sure that all parents have all the information before they opt their students out. I think we've done a good job, or even as a community, we've done a good job letting parents know that they have the right to opt their students out. But have we done a job, and is it our, should we be doing the job? I just kind of want us to discuss it, of letting them also know if they don't reach the right percentage of numbers, that it could affect your school grade and teachers' pay. I, you know, I just want to hear. I want us to have a discussion on this, and what we think, and what we could do. In some districts, there's so much pressure. Teachers put it on the students. I don't want that to happen. I want, you know, students to feel comfortable opting out, if that's what them and their parents choose. But I think there's some room for growth here for us. So thoughts?
Mr. Ziegler.
So I think there's a serious flaw in the state's system of grading if they are going to provide a process for opting out. I think it's very wrong of them to provide that as an opportunity for our community, and then harm a school because of that. Something, that's just wrong. Something needs to change, and I would actually question the legality of using opting out as a measurement of enough students. I believe that the measurement should be after the opt-outs, the percentage that are required. And I think that's legally challengeable, and I think that we should appeal that letter grade for that school, and fight for our school and our employees.
We are appealing, right, Ms. Klein? However, we're not appealing on those grounds, to my understanding, correct? Do you want to, do you have some input on that?
I'm going to guess there's not clarity on what constitutes an adequate number of students, unless they specifically say that the opt-out impacts it.
95%, I think, is the number. But you also stated that the state provides a way to opt-out. They really don't. That's your legal right as a parent, and a human being, to not take that test. But the state does not support, provide a way. They discourage it, which is why they...
I thought they had, I thought they had language that explained how to handle that.
Nope.
Oh, they don't?
It's our language.
Okay. So then we create the problem. Well, shame on us. Who did that?
So I have brought with me my amazing Assistant Director for Testing Accountability. NADA handles all of them, everything, testing, and has also already started the appeal process for both the schools who received the "I" in the elementary. So I'm going to let NADA answer any of your questions about opt-out.
So I heard a couple of things in the comments that you both have, that all of you have made, that there is, there are no provisions for the state to opt-out students. That is very true. that is very true. In Brevard, as you all know, we follow the board directive, and we send out that memo to the schools several times, but I think it's really important that parents understand that, that minimal participation that they think that they are doing by the children going into the room and opening, either breaking the seal on a test or logging into the computer, that will not yield that NR2 that we've all heard mentioned out there. For those of you who don't know what the NR2, that means the attemptedness. There's a certain criteria, a certain number of questions that need to be answered by a student, or at least attempted, for the state to consider that an NR2 or not attemptedness. So, I think the case with Holland is that the parents thought that they were going to count for that participation, because once you add those students back in, which I've already done, the school grade remains the same, they will be that grade, which we're not at liberty to say because the state hasn't released it, but when you add them back in, only two students at that school did not test, and that was in science, and that was because of illness. 16 students did, however, have their parents, their parents chose for them not to take the test, and a lot of them were in the fifth-grade math, which counts in three of the cells. Once we appeal it, and absolutely we will appeal it, on the grounds that the, the information that's yielded from the results that we have received absolutely, absolutely represents the progress of the school. Questions?
Go ahead.
Can you clarify again what constitutes it counting for the NR2 and what, because what's being promoted throughout the community and throughout the state is you go in, break the seal, or go in, log in, and then don't answer any questions. What happens at that point to school grade or counting or not counting, and where do you, how many questions do you have to answer in order for it to qualify or not qualify? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. So, I'm going to start with how many questions, and that is not something that we've ever been privy to, nor do I think, and that's only an opinion, my humble opinion, please accept that as it is, that we need to say to students, go into a test and click seven times or 12 times so that that'll count as participation. The directive that we have from the board is that the students will go into the room, they sit down, they log in, once they're done, if it's a computer-based testing, they go out. That does not count at all because they did not meet the number of clicks that it, that you have to have in order to be considered to have participated. The other side of the coin
So, do they get the NR2 score for that?
They do not get an NR2.
Okay.
Now, the other side of the coin is, if it's a paper-based test, they break the seal, nothing else happened, that goes in your not-to-be-scored materials, and again, no NR2, that doesn't count, those students don't count at all. If you have a student that comes in and starts testing, midway through the test they get sick and then they have to go to the nurse, they have to go home because they're very ill, they can't finish that test, that test goes in your to-be-scored materials because that child attempted to test. So, that's very different from not starting the test, and that's the way the state looks at it. That child would either meet not attempted, or attemptedness, or it would be just an NR, not tested, or an NT.
So, it's interesting, but there's got to be some sort of state-written directive of what the definition of NR2 is. I mean, it's, it's a code that is obviously coded into their system, so there has to be a, there has to be a book that goes along with it that says, here is what the criteria are for NR2.
They have to respond to a specific number of questions, we've never been privy to the specific number of questions.
Have we asked?
It could be 10. I've asked in the past, and we've now been provided with that information, but I can certainly ask again. However, I do caution, not that I'm in the place of cautioning anyone, but please, it's a can of worms that it's, when kids are going into a room and you're saying to them, you have to answer, click X amount of questions, are we setting the right precedence? So, I guess it's not.
No, I understand, I just, I can't believe that they don't have some sort of written
I'm sure that they do.
Somewhere.
I'm sure that they do, yeah.
Okay. Ms. Belford?
So, Ms. Duskevich, we had significant conversation prior to you joining us on the board on this issue, and what Ms. Francis refers to is at that time, the board gave the directive that students should be, I mean, we were pretty clear on, you know, the expectation, and at the time, initially when that was developed, those students that were breaking the seal were getting NR2s, and I believe the following year, the state, in response to the opt-out movement, changed those requirements, and so that's why those students are no longer eligible for an NR2 when they go through that breaking the seal or logging in process. So, Ms. Francis was gracious in following board direction and putting those letters out to the schools and letting, letting principals and teachers and families know, and it was certainly a work in progress. We had some hiccups along the way where the directive was not followed and took some, some work in revamping and language and that sort of thing. And I, like you, it's such a complicated issue because while I would love to be able to say to parents, this is the impact to your school of your child not participating, I feel like we have to walk a really fine line because anything that we put in, in that communication is often perceived as us trying to pressure parents into participation. And I do, I mean, I, you guys have heard me say 100 times, I really feel like you need to have all of the information before you make a decision, but sometimes with that information coming from us, it's perceived as, you know, us bullying parents into marching.
Agreed, which is why I didn't come with preconceived ideas. I mean, I was the person on that side saying, we need a letter telling parents, so, you know, and you guys complied, and thank you, but now, you know, I, all the information I think needs to get out. Does anyone have any creative ideas on how to inform without looking like bullies?
You know, I, I wonder if it would be a good opportunity for us as board members who have been supportive of the parents or children's desire to opt-out, if Ms. Klein, Ms. Francis, if you all could provide us kind of a comprehensive list of impacts to the school of students opting out, perhaps the board members could do some sharing of information. I mean, we all have networks of parents who have been a part of that process, and that might be a way, since they know that we have been supportive of that right of parents and students, it might come across a little
So, instead of letterhead, official letter, more unofficial ways of spreading information, we're open, I'm guessing, we're open to ideas from you all also.
Absolutely. The other thing to keep in mind is that we can always appeal, and the last one that we appealed, because of the parents choosing not to have their students test, we were, the appeal was granted.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Ms. Enville, and I won't put you aside, but do you know if there's any pending legal challenges to any of the issues surrounding what we're talking about?
I'm not aware of any.
Maybe if you can reach out to your colleagues and see if there is any sort of pending legal challenges that we at least should be informed of, and then, you know, going forward, Dr. Mullins, not that you and Dr. Blackburn together now as the, as the superintendent team until August, you know, it might be helpful to have a quick roundtable with the cabinet to see what maybe some best practices are from other districts, however, I'm sure we're not the only ones that are dealing with this issue, so it'd be interesting to see how other districts are handling it, unless you already know, I don't know if you do.
No, I was just going to add, if it pleases the board, we could work toward continuing the conversation, we have a workshop scheduled, if you recall, on curriculum coming up in late August, which would still give us plenty of time if there's a direction, new direction, we can continue the conversation, then provide you the information you've requested, et cetera.
That'd be great if you could do that, thank you. Anything else? Thank you for bringing that up, Ms. Duskevich, an excellent discussion point. Mr. Ziegler, armed drivers in armored cars.
Thank you. I wanted to bring this up and point out some, some concerns that I have, and discuss them with the board to see if the board shares my concerns. Obviously, we have a contract, obviously, we're moving forward with transportation services, and I'm not in a position to bring that up, I'm on the losing side of that vote. However, back in March, I had questioned the ability for armored car drivers to carry a weapon in the, while they're doing their service, and I got a, we got a response back from Mrs. Enville, I'd say the majority of which I absolutely agree with, but I still have, I have legal concerns, policy concerns, liability concerns, and training concerns. First note that the RFP that Brevard Public Schools created that goes out does not request an armed service. The vendor, I can have your attention, the vendor did not reply back that they would be providing armed services. So, we all know by the nature of the service, it is typically an armed service. So, from a legal perspective, Mrs. Enville very astutely came back and pointed out that unarmed vehicle personnel clearly do not fall under the definition of law enforcement, which is exempt from statute, so the armed car driver is not exempt from statute. She also pointed out very astutely that, according to an Attorney General opinion, that the board has home rule on approving this to be done. Absolutely agree with that. However, it's, the statement about approving, about it being okay for school sanctioned activities, I don't consider this a school activity, I consider it a service, but either way, it would have to be explicitly approved, and it's not explicitly approved in the RFP, nor the response to the RFP, nor have I seen any document. And the reason I bring this up again is because I've had conversation with law enforcement who is on the clear understanding, this is not permissible. We would have to, as a board, provide clear evidence through a document, most likely a policy, that this is permissible. We have not done that, and so I don't see that there's any clarity to law enforcement to tell them just, oh, by the way, this is okay, when, when law is very clear and policy is very clear. I believe we need a policy to allow this to happen. My other concern is liability. The RFP that we send out has typical liability coverage requirements of the vendor, which they do comply with, but we've had a conversation when it comes to weapons on campus about liability, and we have not come to a conclusion in our own mind, what is the acceptable level of liability on our behalf. The vendor has covered liability on this, which I don't believe was designed with limits for the purposes of carrying a weapon, and we haven't discussed whether we need additional coverage of liability on our side of the fence. Also, we've had very significant conversations amongst this board and amongst our community on limited, except, on the minimum amount of acceptable training, and I think we've been very clear on that, what that is to carry a weapon on campus. These drivers do not have that minimum level of training. We've had no conversation on that. That concerns me, that one form of individual carrying a weapon needs a certain amount of training, and another one doesn't. I don't see a difference, once the weapon is on campus, as to having that comfort level between the different types of people. So, my biggest issue is that we, I believe we need a policy before this is permissible because there's nothing stopping law enforcement from arresting a driver carrying a weapon who's not permissible by law. I had hoped by asking this question early on the process, that would have come forward to us. In a recent email from Mrs. Enville, she stated that the superintendent approved this. I'm sorry, I don't see where the superintendent has the authority to overrule statute or policy, that's the board's authority to do that, and I think it's imperative that we address this and address it as soon as possible, because if I was an armed car driver, carrying a fair amount of money, I'd feel more comfortable if I was armed, but at this point in time, I don't believe that it is permissible for that driver to carry on our properties, and I have not seen yet a document as evidence to be proved, to be provided to law enforcement in this county to stop them from doing that, and I think it's a danger to the drivers to be carrying. And I'd like the board's input on this, if you'd like to move forward on a policy, or if you just want to ignore all this and just let it fly in its current form.
Ms. Enville, do you want to weigh in at all on any of the, maybe just to bring us back up to speed, because I know we, we mentioned, Mr. Ziegler mentioned emails that I know we all got, but just to, we're all on the same page about
So, so, the statute is pretty clear that if you want to be carrying a weapon onto property, there's an exception for law enforcement officers, and our, as he said, the, the armed, armored car personnel are not law enforcement officers. So, the AGO that references the, the armed pers, like armed contractors or whatever, actually was dealing with hiring private security that would have, carry guns, and although it's not specifically related to this particular situation, the AGO pointed out that there's no definition of school sanctioned activities, but that they think that that would be covered under there. So, looking at those things, and then looking back at what the solicitation says, it didn't specifically say armed personnel, but there was a term, I guess, I guess we'd call it a business term, armored transport services. I took a look at what some other districts have done, and some of them have done, called it the same thing, armored transport, some have called it non-armored or unarmored transport services, but even those solicitations didn't specifically say, yes, carry a gun, or no, carry a gun. And so, our solicitation went out for armored transport services, which when you do just a normal search for those, most companies offer the armored version and the unarmored or non-armored version. So, I don't know if that helps at all on where we are here, because the board, I think, approved this contract back in March, so if, if it is the board's desire to have unarmed transport services, I suppose that, I believe there's probably a termination provision, we can do that and resolicit for unarmored.
I'm not asking for unarmed, I'm asking for policy to clarify statute and so that our law enforcement know how to handle this. You, I believe you are exactly correct, I agree with your interpretation of home rule powers conferred on the school board, absolutely agree with that, but that needs to be on us as a board to approve a policy to allow that to happen, because there's nothing specific in, like you said, in the RFP or the response that indicates this, it's completely void of the, of the topic. And I think we need clarity on the topic, and that doesn't even include the liability or the, or the, if there's any training concern, because I don't even know what the training is for these people, if there's any at all.
There is training, but the, Ms. Enville, I think the best thing to do, that, all good points, or points that Mr. Ziegler brings out are fair discussion points. I think you gave some good responses, but I think I would probably ask if there is a way for you to reach out to the other counties that are presently using these services, because we modeled that RFP after, I think, a couple other different counties, there are multiple counties that do this, with centralized accounting. Can we, can we get the consensus of what they're doing?
I, I can see if they, if they provided any documentation to their law enforcement agencies on that.
Yeah.
I don't know if they have, but I could certainly see if they've done that.
That would be, I think, the best starting point, to at least get us to a point where what do we need to do, what are other counties doing, and then continue some research into whether it's the superintendent's, is there, what, I can't remember, in the email that you sent about the superintendent's ability to make that exception, where did that statutory power come from?
And I think, we, we discussed it briefly, and, and so, it was the recommendation, the superintendent to bring the contract forward to you for approval, that included the language armored transport services, so it was that recommendation. It doesn't specifically, the statutes don't say that the superintendent has the authority to do so, but the school board, by its approval of the contract, arguably may, issued, you know, used its home rule power to do so.
So, then, yes, I would like to know what the, especially some of these bigger counties like ourselves that are using these services, what, what have they done, do they have a policy that's specific to this, and how do they interact with the law enforcement, I bet you we have some time here, but
Now, our, our policy also has the exception in there, I can't, I'd have to look and see, it says something along the lines of, it's our 7217 policy, it says, as well as other persons approved by the school or district on a case-by-case basis, so it could be argued on one hand that the approval of the contract is that other persons approved by the school or district on a case-by-case basis, it's not, it wasn't a blanket, it's just for those armored transport services.
Right.
I would, I would suggest simultaneously, I agree with Mr. Craig, and let's check what the other district said, I would simultaneously check with Phil Archer to find out what his position would be on, if in the event somebody was arrested, where he would find the law stand on that. His opinion would carry a lot of weight on this. I would also argue that armored is a, is the vehicle, I don't, I don't see that armored is armed. is armed necessarily, it's an armored, it's a, it's a, secure vehicle is what armored means. So, again, there's, there's nothing speaking to this, and I would caution, and I think we need to caution our vendor, that maybe they should start off not armed, because there's a chance of arrest, until this is cleared up.
Are you serious?
That would be my recommendation, because I could, I could not tell somebody that's not going to happen.
Mr. Susan.
I would say, I agree with, you can't tell me that armored transport means armed. That's not a good definition. Maybe moving to non-armed until the beginning. But I had a quick question to back that up. Major Walters, have they provided you a list of the names of those individuals that would be? And you've reviewed them and background checked them to make sure that they're okay?
No.
Okay. We might want to start, kind of, there's a couple other pieces to this, that we might want to talk about, is, is that if we're going to have armed people on our, on our campus, that we kind of background check them.
So, our, oh, sorry.
Can we get some input from Penny on this, because maybe she has some information? I'm pretty sure we can't ask them to carry three million dollars around and not be armed. Like, that would be, I'm sure they would say no.
There are background checks and training that armored car personnel to carry guns in the business are required to do. They all have been participated in that, in the training, and have received background checks. We can obtain those at any time from Mid-Florida. The RFP is part of the original RFP, if you remember, we went through this process, we kept revised it twice. We were asked, at that time shortly after Ms. Enville got here, would we, did we want the weapon service? And our answer as a district with consultants with Dr. Blackburn was yes. And that documentation went out to all of the bidders. It was not in the final packet, because all of the information doesn't go into the final packet from the bid process. Mid-Florida is one that, for the protection of their drivers, want their people to be armed. So, if we ask them not to be armed, we are just going to stop the pickups, which began this week, until this is worked out. I come from a previous district who implemented armored cars with Mid-Florida, and we did not send anything out to law enforcement, and nothing ever happened with that. And the exception was the Board approving the armored car contract, knowing that the drivers would be armed. And I would remind the Board that Dr. Blackburn did state on March twenty-seventh as recommending this, that our drivers would be armed at that time.
Ms. Belfort.
Ms. Belfort. Ms. Zirker, I very much appreciate all of your work on this, but I am, it's not often that you see me get a little bit ruffled up here, but the fact that we have armed people picking up money from our school that we have not verified background checks on infuriates me.
They had, if, they had to be able to go on our campus, they have to meet the Jessica Lonford. We have not done the background, but we have access to their background.
That's my concern, is we have a responsibility to make sure that we have verified their background checks, and that, I just cannot even tell you how concerning that is to me.
We can, we're happy to do that. I'd be happy to make that happen.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Zirker, how many of them actually are in operation throughout our district right now?
How many drivers do they have?
Per day, they're running five, three?
I, I do not know.
Do we know how many drivers in total are in the process?
I do not know, I do not have that available to me at this point.
So, we don't know how many drivers we have?
I do not know.
Major Walters should though, because they've already been pre-approved. That's what he said. So, he should know, because he said that he saw a list of the names.
I know, I don't have it with me at this moment. It is in my office in another location, so I cannot speak to it at this moment.
Okay. Well, I'll just let you, I'm not comfortable with the fact that we don't have a policy clarifying this. I think that's the appropriate course of action, and I think we need to go down that road. Question is whether we need to ask them not to carry in the meantime, or whether we allow them to carry and rectify it along the way. Then we also have the, the training issue, but it appears nobody has a concern about the level of training.
No.
Yet we require that for, for everybody else. I don't understand why there's a difference in acceptable levels of training.
Yes, Mr. Susan.
That is the concern that I have, and I didn't want to bring it up, that the level of threshold for who becomes a armed transport person in our schools is very low, based upon the RFP and the process and the people that are there. I didn't want to bring that up, I wanted to kind of see what those people were prior to me making that decision. But I do agree with you, Andy, in that there needs to be some kind of a policy set forward to allow this piece, there's too much gray area. And although I like to live in that gray area, I think this is one that we need to be solid on.
Okay. What's that? Ms. Belfort?
I was, I was commenting on Mr. Susan's comment about living in the gray area. If I may just, if I may just clarify, Ms. Zirker, my comment was not directed at you personally, it was directed at the process, and it is a major concern for me. So, please don't take that as me calling you on the carpet, but it's something that we have absolutely got to address. Thank you.
All right. So, are we giving direction for a policy, or are we ignoring that? We need some conversation.
We are going to review what other districts are doing. I don't think you need a policy, to be quite honest with you, but Ms., I think Ms., that's my personal opinion. You all are, you all are arguing definitions of a RFP that we discussed ad nauseam at multiple events, where this kind of topic was discussed quite a bit. So, it's not like it's brand new all of a sudden right now. And maybe there's a reason that we're trying to make it brand new, no, I don't know why, but.
I lost track of it when the conversation came up.
The policy, I think, is something that we have asked Ms. Enville to go back, find out what other districts are doing. We're not the only ones that do this. In fact, most of the big districts do do it. And so, there is a precedent that other districts are using, I think that that is the first place to start. And then reaching out through the other legal means to figure out what it is we need to do to ensure that we are compliant with the Florida statutes, but also that we aren't breaking our own policies, and that we don't have to revise a policy with extra language. And if we do, so be it, we can have that revision. We want to make sure that we're, we're doing the correct thing, I think. I think that's the first place to start.
So, that sounds great. What do we do in the meantime till then? And what is the expiration date on her returning that information, and what's the plan? So, if she comes back and says, this is green lighted, this is good, that's one thing, but if you come back and say, you know what, we probably do need to define that, we need to look at some of these background checks and stuff like that, what are we looking at there? That would be my ask.
Okay, well, I think Ms. Zirker is going to go and get the background information on people. I mean, we can go back and pull all the minutes of every meeting and see where this was discussed. And if you are revisiting it again, then you need to make a motion to revisit it. Otherwise, we've already approved this and had this full discussion. Again, you're bringing up things that are, that we've already discussed, and Ms. Zirker has given you dates where we have discussed that. And so, if you want to change that, that's fine, but you have to go through the process to do that.
I think that, Ms. Enville, you need to, we need to take a look at where we're at with this policy, if there needs to be one or not. But I know Ms. Deskovic looks through, and other people look through, every single assistant principal that comes up, and principal that is approved. I would like to make sure that the people that are carrying an armed gun inside of our schools are also, that was my angle. So, I would like to take a look at that, that's all. And we have until, what, August second before the kids come back? So, make sure that they're, that they're sound.
You got that, Mr.?
We, I will work with Major Walters to see what he needs for, for the background check, and I'll work with Ms. Enville to see what other districts do to notify, as far as policy change or notification to law enforcement.
And we do have our COO up here, who will, I'm sure, see it from an operational standpoint and lends in and weigh in as appropriate. Dr. Molly, do you have anything to add?
I just want to make sure we're clear on the direction of the Board. So, we are going to review policy, other districts. I anticipate Ms. Zirker's probably already reached out to staff and said, let's contact our contractor and get verification of the background checks, and we'll certainly work with our district security officer. Any other direction from the Board at this point in terms of service, or, just want to make sure we know what the direction of the Board is.
Did we state that we wanted to go to the state level to get Phil Archer's advice? Is that what you said?
I can, I'll check with him if you'd like.
Just some kind of a statutory, I understand Orange County, whoever else has this, Palm Beach, they may not have been doing it right, doesn't mean because they did, that it's right. Let's check with who's in charge. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion points or Board member reports? Okay, then.
John, I got a quick question, something that just came up, literally, in the last fifteen minutes. Ms. Archer, I hate to do this, can you give us an update on the charter school that was proposed to go into Merritt Island and all those other areas, but now is looking to seek to build right next, right on Pineeta here in Viera? Just give us an update as to where that's at. There was some concern that, now that we're doing a Capitol Outlay Meeting and all these other things later on, that we needed to have some discussion, a little bit opening. As you guys know, we're doing a Capitol Outlay Meeting, which they're going to discuss the growth in the central area. This is a huge piece of that, and I think that this is what we needed to hear, so.
So, funny you should mention that, because I have a meeting with them next week, with Dane Theodore. So, Pinecrest Charter, when they submitted their application, gave us a variety of Google Earth potential places to build their charter school. But for the first time ever, their Board decided that they wanted to work with us, and sit down with us and have a conversation about where would it be better to place their charter school that would assist us in meeting the capacity issues that the district may face. So, they sat down with Mr. Theodore and myself, and we looked at it, and actually, Dr. Blackburn as well, and we talked with them and decided that it was in our best interest and theirs to build just between, just south of Quest before Pineeta Causeway, so that as Quest begins to bust at the seams, we can address it by opening this charter school in that vicinity.
So, can you tell me what the, can you tell, can you tell me what the capacity of this is supposed to be?
Oh, gosh, I haven't looked at their application in several months. They are going to be a K-eight school when they finish, but they will start as a K-two at third grade, and they will do a five, six, and add seven and eight. They, they have a very unusual model, again, unlike any of our other charter schools, because they're trying to build their primary, and then skip a grade or two, and then their intermediate into their middle school. So, ultimately, I believe their projection was about six hundred students.
And according to our earlier numbers, a six hundred person charter school opening up in our area will reduce our operating income roughly by five to six million dollars, just so you guys know, as we were looking at those numbers earlier.
Mr. Susan, I can bring their projections, based on their application, to the next workshop, so I have more accurate data for you.
One other question I have is, is that we, as a school Board in general, have approved local charters, being a part of these charter schools. Can you tell us how many local or national charters we have currently working inside of our district?
So, Imagine is the only national charter school that we currently have. We do have charter schools, Pinecrest is one of them, that has a management company of Academica that comes from a variety of different areas. I did tour their school in Clermont before, so they have in Lake, in Palm Beach, in Miami. Pinecrest is very well established in the south area. But most of our charter schools are mom and pops, and they're very localized.
So, that, so there's only one other charter out of how many charters do we have in the district?
There'll be twelve next year.
And then, we getting back to the one other situation where we said that it was better to put them in this area, right?
Yes, sir.
And that was based on growth.
Correct.
Where were the other areas that they were looking at per their application?
They were looking at an area between Endeavor, Cambridge, Saturn area, but when we had that discussion, we were afraid, because they included a middle school, that we would have a negative impact on McNair, so they listened to us, because they don't want to negatively impact us. They want to work with us and build our capacity, which is actually the intent of a charter school.
Is Cocoa currently at high capacity?
Cocoa high, yes, but they're not frozen, simply because we need to be able to have their master schedule be open. I know Dr. Sullivan and I have worked in the past to keep them open for students to elect to participate in their programs.
So, some of those, Saturn, I think Saturn's at capacity, Cocoa's at capacity, we had to build another wing there. All of those schools in that general area are at capacity, except for McNair, I think is what.
Correct.
So, we had, they're looking at one capacity area and saying, no, we're not going to go there, we're going to go to another place, and we steer them away.
But I can, I can get, again, bring that information, based on the projection meetings that we had in November.
All right. Anybody else have any other questions?
Ms. Belfort?
And I just want to, we may need to speak to this in our next one, but I just want to put it out there as you're gathering information as well. Looking geographically, and I know we have, we have talked about Quest growing significantly and concerns there, what is the current capacity and available capacity at Viera to address some of that capacity issue as well?
They're already full and have a waitlist, so if you're talking about Viera Charter School, there was some conversation with them about potentially buying additional property and building another wing to expand their school as well, but I have not heard anything definitive from them to do so, because they are questioning whether they wanted to build their middle school capacity or the K-eight capacity as a whole. So, I've not heard, you know, an answer from their governing board or their principal as to what they intend to do at this moment.
So, the only, right now, the only forecast additional capacity in this area would be Pinecrest?
Correct.
If I could speak to that, I know for a fact, Viera Charter was meeting and preparing and visiting with Viera Company, and expanding, had the land set aside and everything. I do know that this news of them opening just south of Quest swung like a week and a half ago, when the Viera Company said, okay, we'll grant you the land. I think it creates a significant problem, because Viera Charter, who was already there, is expanding in the area, and would have been able to take off some of, in the same way, those other pieces, and now it negatively impacts them. Now, if that's a war between two charters, that's one thing, but I think that it behooves us to take a look at how we are deciding on creating capacity, because we're arguing over the cost of building a school, and we're losing millions of dollars in operating income. So, whereas we say we have only twenty-two million dollars to build a middle school in Viera, and it costs thirty-two, that's only ten million dollars. In two years with operating dollars, we could have cut, crossed that line and gotten there, and then moving forward, we would have had more money. So, there's a whole argument that I'll bring up in the workshop, that I think that I needed the Board to be educated on this topic, because there's some stuff going on here. All right?
In my last conversation with Viera Charter, also, they have just a small piece of their current property to build on, so they can't extend extensively, they only have a limited one building opportunity for them. Of course, they go to a second floor where.
They, yeah, they had the land that they, Viera Company was going to give them across the street, that they were supposed to be working with. That was the overall plan. Ms. Archer, thank you so much, I didn't mean to do that to you.
It's okay.
And it was a great job, thank you for hitting all the points.
Is there anything else in the Board discussions, anybody think you have anything to add? Then I will entertain a motion to take from the table, item F-23 and the amendment, well, let's start with taking item F-23's amended motion that was made by Mr. Susan, seconded by Mr. Ziegler, that changed the, removed the contract from, did you write this down, Ms. Enville? The exact wording? That removed the July third letter and replaced it with the July ninth letter. Is there a motion to take that from the table?
So, Ms.?
Moved by Ms. Belfort, seconded by Mr. Ziegler. Is there any discussion? My only discussion is, is I don't see in the current F-23, any change to the attachment. We still have the July third letter there.
I think that maybe we're looking at two different things. There, there's the letter that Mrs. Zirker sent, and it is on there, the one that's July ninth?
I think if you refresh your agenda, you will find, it's published on the website.
The letter says July ninth, but the first document, the schedule, financial charges.
That's because that is confidential and can't be published on the agenda. It's only, it's in the file, only you can see it, the public cannot see it.
But it still says July third, and it still has those. But it still says July third, and it still has those.
The, the only changes to the letter, the financial charges did not change, only the dates and term of the contract changed, so there's no change to that document. That's why it did not change.
I don't understand, it's still just thirty-six months.
You've lost me, because it still says thirty-six months.
But it's gone, and if you refresh your agenda, it's gone.
It just take, it takes time, but it'll load.
Really? Yours refreshed?
Yeah, refreshed, because I did it.
It's still there.
I just think, even if what they're saying is true, even if, even if staff is saying that this is one document, the other one is the implementation document, this is the one that has all the charges and stuff like that on it.
Can't we just vote on the new one, even if it's not in front of us, because I still have the thirty-six months?
My financial charges, the long letter is still July third and for three years. I don't know what else to do. Place where I would sign says three years.
If I may, it looks to me like the first two pages of the schedule of financial charges, the first two pages is the July third letter. That July third letter needs to go away and be replaced with the July ninth letter, because the remainder of the schedule of financial charges has that confidential information with those charges on there. So the motion, or the, with the board, what I think you're trying to do is take off that July third letter and replace it with the July ninth letter, but because it's in one...
Which was what the amended motion did.
Right.
But then we decided to table it, thinking that we were going to be able to just make it happen, but it's not happened.
We can't, I don't think we can, because I don't, I think the actual charges are confidential, which is why we can only see that. So you would have to re-scan the charges after page one and two, and attach the new July ninth letter on top, is that correct?
That's apparently what it is. My understanding was the only thing going on was the first two letters, the first two pages of it, which is why you cannot see from the published side the financial charges. And that's what we made sure was available and published publicly, was those first two pages. They replace, so when you look at the document that the public can't see, the July ninth letters replace those, so...
Replace the first two pages of the...
The first two pages of, I guess, I can't see it, I can't look at it myself, so I don't know what's there. When I go in, it's just an icon that won't let me look at it, so I had no idea.
Ms. Enval, is it necessary then for us to vote on that amendment that replaces, that was what the amendment was, was to replace the July third letter with the July ninth letter?
I think that's important to go ahead and make sure the board is clear about, that the July third letter is not being considered, it's just the July ninth letter.
Then I will, unless there's further discussion, I will call the question on that amendment, which is to remove the July third letter and the financial charges and replace it with the July ninth letter. That was the original amendment that Mr. Seuss made, and was seconded by Mr. Ziegler. So let's call that question. Pam, do we need to do that verbally?
Please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes, five-zero. Then, F-23 was originally moved by Ms. Deskovic and seconded by Ms. Belfer. We do need to have action on that to remove it, so is there any more discussion? Hearing none, I will call a question, reminding you that this is to remove this, which was the original thing, it replaced by the amendment. All in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
Same sign. And the motion passes, or motion fails, five-zero, F-23 goes down, five-zero, but the amendment passes. Does that satisfy Ms. Enval?
Yes, I think that's clear.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Zirker, for your patience, I think we worked through that.
Do I have it approved either?
Yes.
As long as it has the change.
You're just replacing the portion that you can't see, that we can see, with the portion that you can see. Thank you. I appreciate everybody's patience in that. All right, is there any other business to come before the board?
No, sir.
Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.